The hour of 11:30 having arrived and the council having completed its business enclosed session, we will come back to order and the clerk, would you be kind enough to call the roll?
Thank you Mayor. Councilmember Trigaro?
Present.
Bruner?
Present.
Newsom?
Present.
Councilmember Golders currently absent. O'Hara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Present.
And Mayor Keely?
Present. Having established a quorum, we're going to go to presiding officer announcements. I will recognize Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you Mayor. With our community today, I wanted to take a moment to talk about a process that Vice Mayor and Calentari Johnson and I have been working on with staff and several members of the community on the issues raised about Flock's safety. Given Flock's safety is not technically on today's agenda, we are providing this update to ensure the community is aware of the steps we're taking and when you can more fully engage on this policy discussion. First, I want to recognize everyone who has shared their concerns about our contract with Flock's safety and the use of the cameras, and recognize those that are likely here to share similar concerns. We hear you and we understand the seriousness of the issues you've raised. I want to say clearly that I share many of these same concerns and have been working over the last several weeks to get answers, gather information, and develop a path forward that protects our community and reflects our values. I want to acknowledge and thank the ACLU and members of Get the Flock Out for your persistence and advocacy. Your engagement has helped shape the work we've been doing. First, it is important to emphasize that our Flock data belongs to the city of Santa Cruz. Because the data is ours, we have both the ability and the responsibility to adjust our practices immediately while we conduct a full and careful review of our ALPR system. This is a critical foundation for the work ahead. And given the importance of clarity and transparency, I've asked Chief Escalante to provide the community with an update on what we've learned so far. He will outline the historical context, including data sharing that has occurred, and explain the steps the department has taken to ensure our data is safe and secure moving forward. Chief Escalante, would you please come forward and share your update with the community?
Good afternoon Chief.
Councilmember O'Hara, thanks for the intro and the rest of the council. I want to provide you with a detailed update regarding the matter involving the Flock's safety ALPR system and recent findings related to SB 34 and SB 54, the California Values Act. We were recently made aware that Flock's safety identified violations of SB 34 and SB 54 within their system architecture that inadvertently affected agencies across California, including the city of Santa Cruz. The issue arose when a national search tool within the Flock's safety system was activated, which inadvertently permitted law enforcement agencies outside the state of California to search all agencies across the country, including agencies within the state of California. These violations were not known to Santa Cruz Police Department and were not the result of any deliberate attempt by city staff to circumvent the California law. We have been notified by Flock that these violations ceased on February 11th, 2025. Additionally, since this date, Flock has added multiple layers and filters of security to ensure this does not occur again in the future. Since February 11th, 2025, Flock has made several changes to their system to ensure this does not occur again and to ensure that the Santa Cruz Police Department is not in violation of state law, both SB 34 and SB 54. So far, Flock has deactivated the national search tool for agencies within the state of California, revoked all permissions for any California agency to create a one-on-one relationship with any agency outside the state of California, and added filter protections against any searches that include anything related to ICE, Border Patrol, immigration, or any other word or phrase like this type of search. Flock continues to look for additional ways to improve or modify their system to ensure the security of their data is within the laws of the state of California. With respect to sharing data with any federal agency, the Santa Cruz Police Department can confirm no member of city staff has directly shared automated license plate reader data in violation of state law, including SB 34 and SB 54. Reviewing the Flock audit data, it is apparent that national searches did include the cameras in the city of Santa Cruz, along with all other cameras of entities that had access to the national search tool. But there is no indication the data from the city of Santa Cruz was ever used by any agency outside of the state of California or by any federal agency for the purposes of immigration enforcement. These national searches were very broad searches across the entire country that captured thousands of agencies within the Flock network. Since discovering the issue, the Santa Cruz Police Department has taken the following administrative actions and safeguards. We've met with the Flock Safety Company repeatedly to confirm corrective measures and ensure confidence in the system moving forward. We've initiated internal changes and evaluating additional steps to strengthen oversight and compliance, such as adjustments to our internal policies. We've identified all California law enforcement agencies that have a one-on-one data sharing relationship with out-of-state agencies and have revoked their permissions to access our data. And we've worked closely, as you've mentioned, with Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson, Councilmember O'Hara, and the City Attorney's Office to develop policy changes that Councilmember O'Hara will outline. In accordance with the city policy, the Santa Cruz Police Department policy, and the values of our community, the Santa Cruz Police Department does not assist immigration and custom enforcement officials in enforcing civil immigration law violations. Thank you.
Thank you Chief. Now I want to outline the actions we are taking now as we continue to review the Flock's safety system.
Excuse me, we're under presiding officer report. The next item on our agenda is oral communication. Thank you. No, excuse me, excuse me. Thank you for your inquiry. I explained the answer to the question. You do not have the floor. You do not have the floor. We are not doing this. We are not doing this. You are not going to speak that way. Nobody else is. You will be respected when your time is there and you will be able to get to the microphone. Councilmember has the floor.
Thank you Mayor and thank you Chief. Now I want to outline the actions we are taking right now as we continue the review of the Flock's safety system. We will temporarily stop participating in the statewide sharing portal, limiting access to our data while we complete this review. Any access to our data will occur through a case-by-case basis, reviewed individually to ensure compliance with our policies, state law, and community expectations. We are responding to public records requests and will disclose all external search activity involving our camera data. We are studying the approaches used by cities like San Francisco and Oakland, which maintains strict control through one-to-one sharing agreements rather than broad network participation. We are developing a comprehensive attestation policy requiring any agency requesting our data to affirm in writing that they will follow our standards, limitations, and legal protections. We are updating our transparency portal with detailed organizational data and will begin providing a quarterly transparency report of our department's use of the system. And lastly, we are evaluating our contract. We are evaluating a contract amendment with Flock's safety that includes the strongest safeguards available to ensure our data cannot be used for immigration enforcement or in ways that conflict with our community's values. We will return to council on December 9th with the results of this review and the proposed amendment. As we undertake this work, I take very seriously, and I know my colleagues share this, our responsibility to make decisions through a data-driven, fact-based, and legally grounded process. This review is essential to fully evaluate the risks associated with Flock, identify what measures can be put in place to limit or eliminate those risks, and weigh the continued use of the system against the investigative benefits it provides. Thank you to all in the community that have been engaged on this issue for your advocacy, your commitment, and your willingness to work with us through these critical questions. We expect to continue this work together as a community on December 9th when we present the results of our review and the proposed contract amendment. Thank you Mayor.
Thank you. Further on presiding officer announcements, I will say this on the topic. I have said before in public, I think that the federal government used 9/11 to strip away a substantial amount of our freedoms and rights with the so-called Patriot Act. I'm not over that. I'm not over the reauthorization of the Patriot Act. I think our police department does a very good job. This is not about our police department. It is about the notion of extensive surveillance in a free society. I don't believe that the... Excuse me. I don't need your applause. My view is that we were better off without the Patriot Act. We are better off without indiscriminate surveillance regardless of how good our police department is at following every single rule. My issue isn't with our police department. My issue is with absolutely widespread surveillance of our public at a time when that should be reduced, not increased. We are now on oral communication. Anyone who wishes to address the council on a matter under our jurisdiction, not on today's agenda for a period of time not to exceed two minutes, this would be your opportunity. Now is your opportunity to speak.
Thank you Mayor. Excuse me, I was just...I am not always available to look into our city processes. Yesterday, I went to the trouble of coming down here. I'm going through a big move. I'm not well-connected with computers. I got the agenda yesterday and I have to get to work. So, I just want to say that in the White House, in the office of presidency, we clearly have a problem with due process, extrajudicial killings. This is absolutely against our constitution and against our American way. But down here in Santa Cruz, we are also having deep, profound problems with the democratic process. The public needs to be a part of every major decision, especially how our land is going to be used. Now, on today's agenda, there are many issues that I will not be able to be here for. So the first thing that I want to say is, could you please have some of these meetings at night? Those of us who work during the day would also like to be a part of our democratic city process. Having these meetings take place only in the afternoons and the mornings rules out a lot of us getting here. There have been issues such as Ms. Leslie Keady's, who's our city arborist, frank admission in an email that was in the city agenda packet at the Parks and Recreation Committee during a tree appeal, which was upheld by the heritage tree law, that she was in the business of heritage tree removal. She said to her business friend and colleague, "Thank you for your help in helping me help you in the tree removal process." Now this is an opening in the public need to know about this because something like 300 to 400 trees, heritage trees a year are being downed, cut. The heritage tree law is all we have to protect them. Please do not give away our city monies to Jason Architects. We want a truly transparent process on the South of Laurel's process, and we are against you just handing money over to the warriors without public transparency. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next person in line. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon Mayor Keely and council. My name is Kevin Cummings. I am a grateful affordable housing policy beneficiary led by my councilmember Scott Newsom. Today, I'm reminded of the late, great Chicago Cubs shortstop Ernie Banks, who once said, "Let's play two." I spoke at the county council member meeting this morning. So, I'm here today as an aside, Scott, I loved your column on the Warriors. I agree with it wholeheartedly. So, I'm here today to say thank you to Mayor Keely and to all who worked so hard on Measure C. I just want to, I firmly believe it will change lives, just as the limited measure that helped me and my neighbors change lives. Measure C, what made me most proud about the passage of Measure C is how soundly Measure B was defeated, because people saw through that. And I just, again, for all the people who worked so hard on it, it's a great victory, Mayor, so you're to be commended for that. I know a lot of people worked hard on it, so congratulations on that. But the main reason that I'm here today is I've listened to the faith-based leaders in our community. I'm a middle path Buddhist. I like Chris Hedges, I like Christopher Hitchens, but I think we take for granted the faith-based leaders. I think they helped you, I think they helped me. They show up, they say the right thing, they write the right thing, they write the op-ed. I think you can make a great case that they helped me and Scott and the St. George and they helped you and Measure C. We take them for granted, we shouldn't, we should appreciate them, and I'm here to say thank you to them and thank you to you and to Scott. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's very kind. Let me see if we have anyone online. So, for your information, how we do this is there are folks here to provide comments under oral communication, there are folks online. When we have that situation, what I do is I toggle back and forth. So we've had a couple of people in line, we're now going to take somebody online, then we'll go to you next in line. So, person online, good afternoon, welcome to the city council meeting.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. This is Amy with Get the Flock Out. I wanted to address some of the comments from Suzie and Chief Escalante. Flock has said they've turned off national sharing, but in El Cajon, California, they are still doing national sharing, so I'm wondering how they can say that. Also, we have now found out just recently that it is very easy to hack into the Flock cameras with certain kinds of equipment. That data is not encrypted, as Flock has said it is. It is not deleted after seven days in the camera, as Flock has said it is. And it is also now being sold in batches on the dark web. So when the city says it owns my data, I don't want the city to own my data, I want to own my data. And it's not that I don't trust the police department, I don't trust this company, which is in the business of data brokerage and making money. They're not in the business of protecting our constitutional rights. And most cities at this point, as they've gotten into looking into Flock, are covering the cameras with plastic, taking them down, canceling the contracts. And that is what Senator Ron Wyden of Oregon is suggesting, that we reevaluate the contract altogether. I really appreciate your comments, Suzie, acknowledging our efforts because it's a lot of unpaid work that we're doing out here and a lot of research. And I just really hope that we can understand that it is quite something to believe a tech startup company that is now calling opponents of Flock Antifa and terrorists. So I encourage you to go to my Substack Moment of Truth where I summarize the recent video about the data sharing data on the dark web, selling packages of this data on the dark web. Please take a look. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome.
My name is Nina Aliza Stratton. I live in the Lower Ocean neighborhood, about a block from Little Caesar's. And I did no hard work and little research, but I am very much against the use of surveillance cameras in our city. I'm very much against the...as Amy just said very eloquently, I just second everything that Amy said. And also, to echo what Elise said, I'd like to have more flexible times to participate in our city process. There are plenty of people who could come and speak more eloquently about the Flock cameras, but, you know, A, they work, and B, they're afraid. Let's not amplify fear. Also, I would like very much if the police in this town did something more than harass the homeless. Three and four vehicles at a time on one lone person with a backpack. It's awful. Thank you.
We now, next person online. Person online, good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you. This is Peter Gellblum with the ACLU. I just had a comment, we've come to two questions. I very much appreciate the efforts that councilmembers O'Hara and Calentari Johnson and others have made and are continuing to make. Greatly appreciate it. Two questions. One, Chief Escalante said that one of the things the SCPD has done is to adjust internal policies, but he didn't say a word about exactly what that was. So I'm curious and I'm hoping that somebody will ask Chief Escalante to clarify exactly what internal policies they are changing and how they are changing them. And second, I wanted to get some clarification from council on O'Hara if possible. I believe she said that you were temporarily stopping with statewide sharing, with the statewide sharing portal. Is that, and I just don't know what they mean, does that mean that you're unplugging the cameras for now until you get clarification? If you're not sharing statewide, who is being shared with? Thank you very much. And again, I appreciate the ongoing efforts and I'm very much looking forward to December 9th.
Thank you. Next person in line, welcome.
My name is Lee Brokaw and I'm on the board with Peter. The only way to be sure our data is safe is not to collect it. Simple. I would like to give you a metaphor example of why Flock is not safe. This morning, I got up and I tried to listen to Amy Goodman on KPFA.org and I got a cloud flare interruption out of San Jose. I've never heard a cloud flare. So I thought, well, I'll contact my primary care physician at the VA through the VA email portal, cloud flare interruption. Then I thought, well, maybe I'll listen to Talking Points Memo out of Boston. Cloud flare interruption. We have no idea what goes on out there in the internet, in the ether space. You could have everything in line, everything the chief just said could be true when he wrote it, but not necessarily now. We cannot participate in our personal data on the web, as somebody said, it's for sale on the dark web. We can't trust the web.
Next person online, no one else with their hand up. Good afternoon, Mr. Bear, how are you?
Oh, pretty good, yourself?
Very well, thank you sir.
For those that don't know, my name's Ken Bear. I'm the president of the city chapter of SEIU 521. We are proud of the deal we struck with SEIU bargaining team and the city's negotiating team. We passed this screaming overwhelmingly with a 92% membership voting in favor of it. It was because of this relationship we've built with your director, Ms. DeLeon, that we were able to come to, back to the table and figure out a solution to avoid the strike. I fear without willingness to listen and finding compromise, we would have continued on that path to a strike. However, the legalistic posturing at the table is what set us on that path to begin with. When the city's legal team issued their last best final offer, which appears to have been given out of haste from the city manager's comments to the press, we were left with no option but to prepare for a strike. It's the time, it is time to bring negotiations back in-house as it was done 20-plus years ago. We are backing the firefighters in their contract negotiations and would like to see equitable contract quickly. We stand in solidarity with fire and striking Starbucks workers as they are trying to win a fair contract themselves. We are looking forward to the next three years, continue to work, progress on all fronts. The class and comp study after retirement, healthcare, relief from safety issues from the library and elsewhere in the city. Despite wage increases for city workers, we still struggle to afford housing here in Santa Cruz and look forward to work with the city council in allocating workforce housing to our workforce. Thank you very much and have a good day.
Thank you sir. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Matilla Durant. I, you, and many people in our community are very much aware that we have people desperately in need of food. And I'm very much in favor of what Second Harvest Food Bank is doing, but a local group, Indivisible and other people in that group have decided that based on what Second Harvest Food has told us, that people need protein. So we have arranged a tabling for tuna, meaning that when you go to your grocery stores, your major grocery stores, you might find a table there and with information about tabling for tuna. And people will explain things to the people that come by. People come in, buy tuna in the store, and then give it to us at the table. It's very important. Then all of those, we're trying to get thousands of them, and then we give them to Second Harvest Food Bank, and they will put it in people's bags to go there. So I hope that, as a radio person, I would say, tune into Tabling for Tuna.
Thank you. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon Mayor and city council members. My name's Tom Davis. I'm one of the owners of Pacific Edge Climbing Gym at the bottom of Seabright, and I am here just to support you considering opening the rail bridge for pedestrian and bicycle traffic. What's happening with the bridge project is an unbearable level of burden on the small businesses down there. Many of them are decades old and are in danger of going under. So, that would be a small and wonderful step in the right direction and a vote of support to those businesses and we would really appreciate it.
Thank you sir. Mr. Geiger, good afternoon.
Good afternoon here, it is afternoon. Well, message is there, I'm glad to hear council is concerned. I just want to say one thing on that subject is if we're not sharing data intentionally beyond the state of California, we're fooling ourselves because other departments in the state of California has been shown to be sharing the data once they get it from us. So, nice token gesture, I'm hoping that's a very small step in the right direction. So I'll speak about something I think is very troubling and it's something that's probably the most cost-effective thing that the city of Santa Cruz does, for partial funding of it anyway, and that is the homeless shelters, shower, and mail programs. I understand that those are to be discontinued and the management, the staff only care to work with people that are going to be housed in the new units there. I've worked in the mental health field, yeah, sometimes you don't want to deal with people having issues, you know, maybe sometimes they're not clean, it may even be somewhat scary. But like I said, this is one of the best bangs for the buck. People on the street have to have a way to get clean, they have to have a way to get mail if they're ever going to get anywhere off of the street, like getting a job, getting in contact with social services. So I'm not sure what's behind that, but you know, that is a very valuable... but you know, that is a very valuable service provided at a very low cost. So I hope the council will really reconsider that and start changing the direction that's going in. Thank you much.
Thank you, sir. We, now we have somebody online, so we'll be right with you as soon as we take the next person. Person online, good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Hector Marine. I'm an organizer within the Beach Flats comunidad and also an educator at Harbor High. I wanted to voice my support of the Get the Flock Out campaign. I believe these Flock cameras, what has been found recently in Capitola is that they violated state law. Not only do they violate state law, these folks, meaning the Flock Corporation, they allowed the ICE organization to surveil on our residents and to surveil migrants. And I think one thing that's very important is that we got to make sure that we protect our migrants because we got to be about it. We got to make sure that our actions matches the impact and the intent. When we declare the city to be a sanctuary city for migrant communities, we need to match that with action. And we can only do that by holding the police chief accountable and ensuring that we, that we get these cameras out. These cameras, they are putting our migrants at risk. And we've seen that through the recent demonstrations of them utilizing this data to target migrant communities within Capitola. So, I mean, they can also utilize that within the city. So we got to make sure that we protect migrants and that we also further hold the chief accountable in the usage of these Flock cameras. And while we're on the subject, I also want to declare my solidarity with the SEIU workers. I urge y'all to also support the SEIU workers. There's an election season coming up within the next year. June is around the corner, so we got to make sure that we also support our union workers. Thank you so much and have a good day.
Good afternoon, sir, and welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Brett Garrett. I live here in downtown Santa Cruz. I want to appreciate the city councils responding to community concerns about the Flock company. I definitely appreciate the comments this morning from the Presiding Officer and Police Chief Escalante and Mayor Keely. Thank you very much for those comments. I deeply appreciate that Santa Cruz is a sanctuary city that has reaffirmed its commitment to be a sanctuary city. In particular, in February, the city council, thank you, reaffirmed Resolution NS 29,187 stating the city of Santa Cruz is a place of sanctuary and no city resources may be used to assist in the enforcement of federal immigration law. And also reaffirmed Ordinance 201706, which states use of city resources prohibited. No city agency, department, officer, employee, or agent shows you city funds, resources, facilities, property, equipment, or personnel to assist in the enforcement of federal immigration law. I feel that anytime our data is placed in the Flock database, that it's a violation of those provisions. I feel that the Flock database is a very dangerous place for our data. The company cannot be trusted. And my understanding is not even encrypted on the way there. So basically, if we're going to use traffic cameras, we need to be in control of the data through our own local servers and encryption. Just please be careful with our data. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have another person online. We'll go to that person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, my name's Martha Legere, and I just moved here in the last year. And I was so excited to see all the places that we could go, especially in Seabright. So I want to say the temporary walk and bike path is critical. And it's critical now because many businesses will have to close if we wait for three years. And I know that the city has smart and competent people, and you guys can figure out what to do with shifting the money if we have to do that from some less important thing to a bike path that's going to save our businesses. And that I really want you to confront the rail operator's refusal and figure out a way to move forward. I don't know all the technical ways to do that myself, but I think you guys can do it. And I really like that because I just paid all my taxes and they're a lot more than where I used to live in a different state. So I want them to go to the right place. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Mr. Pomerantz, good afternoon, sir.
It is afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, council. Nice to see you. Thank you for meeting with us recently. I'm Ron Pomerantz, as representative of the local ACLU on this very important issue of the contract with Flock. Regarding today's information report, which is item 46, it feels a lot like this report is the fox guarding the hen house. I've sent you a list of some items that I would hope you would get answered before you would accept the report. Mistakes happen through human and technological error jeopardizing the security and lives of many, many of our residents when these and the other shortcomings of the report before you are addressed and vote to accept it. It's unfortunate. The more important policy issues are not on today's agenda as anticipated. Santa Cruz's two-year contract with Flock expires, I have, if I'm correct, is March 29th of next year. Important public conversation is not so much about the annual report but regarding the pros and cons of Flock and ALPRs and trying to balance competing interests. In particular, renewing the Flock contract, holding it in abeyance or not renewing it is ultimately what's most important and not before us today. The worlds are very different. The Trumpian world now is very different than it was March of '24 when this contract was signed. Ooh, I'm running out of time here. So, as you know from news reports, the data from the ALPRs has been shared with ICE and Homeland Security, and that's against California state policy as well as our own. Santa Cruz is not alone in questioning the ALPRs and Flock. Many other jurisdictions are struggling with the same question. Some have withdrawn their contracts completely. There's no guarantees, no more guarantees, because we already know it gets abused. Thank you for your time and thoughtful attention today.
Yes, sir. Anyone online? We'll take the next person online, then we'll take the next person in line. Person online, good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, this is Reggie Misler, just calling in. I appreciate everyone who's here to push back against Flock. I just want to give kind of a reality check here that like, you know, guys, this is like, this is what the state does. They surveil. They work with higher levels of government to basically enclose us and, you know, keep us constantly at threat. So I would love for the city council to like, fight back against Flock. But I know they're not going to do it. I know even if they did it, the state is going to come down on them. I know if the state does fights back, that the Fed is going to come down on them. I mean, this is a multi-layered government issue. The fact that the data isn't even encrypted when it's being sent, I mean, that means that I could just like, do a man in the middle and collect the data yourself, like, and track any way I want it. Like, it's like you guys just aren't thinking about this at all from your own sort of like, basic safety perspective. But of course you're not because you work for the state interests. And the state interests are to surveil everyone, to be ready to throw them in jail at like, the slightest excuse. I mean, a lot of people ICE is going, are going after, are not even normal targets of immigration enforcement, which I wouldn't support even if they were normal targets. But, I mean, this state is going down, guys. This is not, this is not going to continue.
Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi, my name is Julia Monahan. I'm here with Get the Flock Out. And I wanted to just thank everyone that shared, and particularly Mayor Keely and councilmembers O'Hara and Colter Johnson for looking into the data as we've been requesting. I wanted to just clarify and reiterate that this is not a critique or a distrust of the police. I lived downtown Santa Cruz on Pacific for 10 years. I'm a survivor of domestic violence. This is not about not wanting public safety. This is about wanting to protect our civil rights, whether that's of our migrant siblings, if it's women fleeing their partners, if it's domestic violence survivors, or if it's anyone with the right privacy seeking healthcare. The issue is not about the city of Santa Cruz or Santa Cruz Police Department. The issue is Flock being an unsafe company. So the technology is at risk and their honesty is in question. So repeatedly, they've made assurances, "Thank you for uncovering this problem. We didn't know. We'll do better." You can find that issue over and over looking at the national reporting by EFF, by ACLU, by other groups. I'm not going to go through all the tech specs. Amy covers that in her piece. White hat hackers have offered to help them fix this. They've turned everything away in the pursuit of their IPO. So really, it's about money. And it's about what do we choose to protect? You know, how can we protect our people on every level? Not just public safety, but also our Fourth Amendment rights, protecting us from unreasonable search and seizure, which the US Supreme Court said in 2018 case versus Carpenter, cellphone data constitutes something that should be protected from search and seizure because it tells you where you were and when. Guess what? So does Flock data. This is going to come up. Let's be on the forefront. Let's be with all the cities in California and across the country that have said, "Block Flock. We're done. We're going to protect our people. The company can't be trusted. The data is not safe."
Next person online, good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Is that me this time?
Yes, it is. Good afternoon.
All right, good afternoon. Hello, everybody. My name is Manny. I'm the Chair of the Latino Affairs Commission. Hello, everybody on the city council. You guys remember me. I'm with Get the Flock Out, and I want to thank the city council for actually reading the documents that we handed them. I actually appreciate that. The more you read into it, the more you'll realize you should just get rid of the contract. But Capitola Flock data has been breached already. Santa Cruz City denied our record request, likely because they know it's going to be similar to the Capitola data. Flock safety camera data was found for sale on the dark web in check. Security software for the operating system that they use is literally discontinued and has no longer received updates. And I think, I think it's been a decade since it no longer receives updates. San Francisco is not a good model to follow because they have 409 cameras watching everyone, and their data has already been reported to be breached. And if you're going to follow Oakland as a model, then you should actually follow what their Privacy Commission voted on and stand against Flock because Oakland doesn't have any Flock cameras. All the cameras that they have right now were forced on them by CHP. Or I guess, not forced on them, but it was done through non, not through the city council. It was done through the city manager. We do not support our city resources being used to violate our Fourth Amendment rights and help Trump build a surveillance system it needs to increase its mass detention and deportation efforts. And if anybody's interested, please come to the Latino Affairs Commission at the United Way office on December 3rd at 5:30 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon, welcome. Hi.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Keat, and I want to first thank the council. I've seen so many videos online of city council meetings where people aren't paying attention. They're not actively listening. They're mocking the speakers. And I can tell that you're all paying attention. I've seen some empathetic eye contact, and I know that nobody's searching poshmark for deals while we're out here caring about something so deeply. I actually feel how much you care deeply about this, and I know you all can write one heck of a resolution, so I'm hoping you'll do that today. I'm here to talk about Flock. And after the meeting, I want to encourage everyone to go over to Bookshop Santa Cruz and buy a book called, what is it called? Sorry, "Every" by Dave Eggers. It's the follow-up to the book called "The Circle", which informed us a lot about how helpful the internet would be to us. Well, "Every" is about how helpful innocent surveillance of the citizens will be to all of us. It's a nice little read. You can go through it quickly. But it is what we are experiencing right now. I would ask Santa Cruz to record, to rescind their contract with Flock, privately held tech startup and to, that makes money off of the inhumane treatment of our fellow citizens, our friends and our family by this current Trump administration. I would also, like I said, I do know that you guys write one heck of a resolution, and I would ask you to maybe go one step further and encourage your neighbors in Capitola and Watsonville to do the same. To not only denounce, to rescind your contracts with Flock, but to renounce that and the information that they're handing over to this administration so that they can continue to harm fellow immigrants, fellow citizens, just people that we care about. This treatment is incredibly inhumane, and I, I, I'm sure you all agree with that. Thank you.
We're going to take next person online, then we'll be right with you, sir. Person online, good afternoon and welcome to the council meeting.
Hi, thank you. My name is Erica Snovitch, and I am agreeing with the other people in attendance. We do not need Flock here. Clearly, the data can be easily manipulated to hurt our neighbors through ICE. And I am concerned that it would only be a step further later on for it to be used in other nefarious ways. So please, 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 just get rid of the Flock cameras completely. Rescind your contracts. We don't need that in our town. Our town needs to be a haven for people, not a place where we're being constantly surveilled and have this Big Brother thing going on. So thank you to all the other speakers, and thank you, council, for considering that. And yeah, get rid of Flock. It's very clear what the public wants, and we do vote for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome.
Hi. Hi, thanks for having me. I'm Ian McCray. I own Hulu's Island Grill and Tiki Room in downtown Santa Cruz here. We're about to celebrate 20 years here coming up pretty quick. We have 70 employees. And to date, through our Mahalo Monday program, we've given over $160,000 to over 50 local county, Santa Cruz County-based nonprofits. You know, I've got some employees that are a little worried right now because of the current political climate, as you can understand, and it kind of ties in with what's going on here today. But what I'm really here to talk about is parking and the fact that we're down 20% because of these parking challenges. So I just have some quick suggestions what we might be able to do. One is turn Cathcart back one way temporarily, going from Cedar to towards Front Street. I think if you put in angled parking starting at the Pearl Alley, where the new crosswalk is, you could probably get 20 angled-in spaces in there, which would also, which has also increased revenue for the city of Santa Cruz. I realize you're, I've heard that the parking garages are not being utilized as well as they could be. But in, so what we need to do is educate our public that they are open, that there are spaces in there. And that I suggest by coming up with six-by-12-foot signs that can go on the current parking, on the current fencing on the library site, which Stephen, the project manager here, is quite in favor of. Stephen is also quite in favor of having Cathcart one way for that block because it would be safer for him getting his trucks, equipment in and out of that particular site, you know.
Hold on just a second. The council member in that district is taking notes.
Okay.
I strongly suggest you connect with the council member and continue this conversation. Do we have another person online? Good afternoon. Welcome.
Hi, can you hear me? My name's Andrea Alvarez. Thank you for opportunity to speak. I'm here because I'm deeply concerned about the expansion of Flock Safety Surveillance Cameras in Santa Cruz. We're making a major decision about surveillance in a sanctuary city without answering the most important questions. We keep hearing that these cameras are about public safety, but there is no solid evidence that mass surveillance reduces crime. What is documented is that Flock data has been shared with ICE and other jurisdictions, even when cities claimed it would not be. That puts immigrant families in Santa Cruz at risk, the same families the city has promised to protect. Santa Cruz has long identified itself as a place that values privacy, dignity, and the safety of immigrant communities. Expanding surveillance contradicts those values. It increases fear, not safety. And we cannot ignore the fact that Flock Safety is a private corporation, not a public agency. Once data is collected, the community loses control over who accesses it, how long it's stored, and how it may be used in the future. For a sanctuary city like Santa Cruz, this is unacceptable. I'm asking the council to stop the expansion of Flock cameras in Santa Cruz. Our community deserves real safety and not surveillance. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person in line. Good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. I'm Catherine Hedges. I'm one of the show, I'm for racial justice. And I'm also a resident of Live Oak, and I drive through Santa Cruz and Capitola on a regular basis. Thanks so much for those of you who have shared the public concern about the Flock camera security. Please disconnect the cameras immediately or cover them up, as so many other cities have done, and rescind the contract ASAP. Now, Flock deceived you, just like they've deceived many other cities across the country into hosting these cameras to collect data for them to sell, as well as supporting Project 2025. We're now finding out that their data security is absolutely laughable. We cannot trust them with our data, our surveillance data, collecting in violation of the Fourth Amendment with no probable cause. They claim the breaches were an accident. It won't happen again, but they haven't stopped. You can get their data on the dark web. So I don't want to trade my privacy for the illusion of security, and neither do many people across the political spectrum. It hasn't demonstrated significant safety improvements anyway. And although today's hot issue is immigration, which is very, very important, we need to be a sanctuary city in deed, as well as word. But I don't want to be pulled over unjustly because some camera misread my license plate. I don't want stalkers using Flock data to find their victims. I don't want my doctor of therapy visits in the city monitored. I don't want my trans friends tracked for a transphobic regime. Please disconnect the cameras and rescind the contract. Also, connect the bridge, post-shower, stay unhoused, and agree to the SEIU contract. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Next person in line. Good afternoon, sir.
Yeah, hello. My name is James Ullin Whitman. Is this the time to pull items off the consent agenda?
No.
No, it's not. It's been a while. So I think it's great that there's this huge gathering that's talking about these physical cameras that actually, from what they're exposing, they, human beings can see 5% of the light spectrum. You know, those cameras are actually taking pictures of people's license plates. What brought me in to speak more than six years ago is why are we allowing military-frequency weapons in civilian locations? This thing takes an infrared shot every seven seconds on both sides. It's recording every word we say. Surveillance capital has come in. You know, the fraud going on by what we're supposedly protected from, by our Constitution, for what the government can and can't do, private businesses are doing that, you know? Corporations are running the show. Besides that, you know, I wish people really were a little bit more informed. I probably want to do some more films to help people become more informed, but not to throw the previous speakers under the bus about what actually to be concerned about. There's a lot of other things to be concerned, you know? It's been a while. I was at a recent, no Kings. And I don't think we should have Kings running the show. You know, this book called "The Metrocrats: Regionalism and Non-Law Governments Are Destroying the United States", any city or county that is under corporate control, the unelected city and county manager controls the elected individuals like they're in a hangman's noose. So are the people really being representative? And is there just a lot of misleading information? We are all in this together, and there's a lot that we can do to help each other. And to speak peacefully to people we don't agree with is the biggest start. That's enough for now. Nice to see you. See you later. It's too bad there's such an overlap.
Thank you.
And what happened in the supervisors' meeting was deplorable, but at least that was recorded.
We have someone online. You're halfway to the microphone. There you go.
All right.
Good afternoon.
Hi there, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to come and address you one more time. So many folks have said, "We just want these cameras taken down. The contract ended." And my background is in tech, actually, and I have deep experience with data privacy and security. And I can tell you that everything I've heard about this company, they are not trustworthy, and they don't even care about data privacy and security. The actions that they're taking are not the actions of a company that wants to protect your data or that wants to prevent hackers from getting your data or any of it. So regardless of the broader issues of mass surveillance and everything that that brings up, this company in particular, we should not be doing business with. Thank you.
Thank you for being there. We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon and welcome. Person online.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Athena. I'm a resident of Santa Cruz. I wanted to say thank you to Flock Out for getting the paperwork and the data and the information out to the public and to the council. And thank you so much to the council members for reading through the documents that you rescind and taking this seriously. I just want to double down with everybody else that Flock betrays our rights. The data is clear. Please cover the cameras and rescind the contract immediately. Besides that, I wanted to talk about the closure of day services. Housing Matters has openly admitted it is not closing day services due to funding issues, but because they don't want to have services available to the very specific clientele that uses their current day services. In order to focus attention only on the people they have chose to live inside of their buildings, inside of their structures. With MHK closing their services, with Felton having their day services closed, Housing Matters is the only place in North County that you can get several of these services between mail, which is essential in order to get your SSI or disability, or apply for housing, or apply for employment, from showers, et cetera. And so many opportunities that MHK, that Housing Matters is currently the only opportunity for. They have a huge reputation for unfair evictions and holding grudges. And now they have the ability to blackball people from day services entirely. They will only be giving day services to who they agree deserves basic dignity. That is not okay. The city needs to make up for this. If you do not account for where the people that live on the streets can take care of these services, as well as the working poor who need these services, you are going to have major problems. I know the city has structures that they could run day services in, and that is necessary. And there's community members that are willing to work with the city and run those services. You cannot have any days without services.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Let me ask first, does anyone with us in chambers wish to provide oral communication? Are we good on that? Raise your hand if you still want to do that. Okay, very good. We're going to complete then the folks that are online. Next person online. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Katie Geralamo. And a lot of the other speakers here today have talked very well about why Flock is not welcome here in Santa Cruz and the security vulnerabilities that are a problem with the cameras. I have five specific asks of the council. The first would be to add no more Flock cameras. The second would be to not renew Flock contract. Also, I would ask to disconnect or cover the cameras. I'd also ask the council to commit to a public audit of the security vulnerabilities, whether or not the contract is renewed because I believe that we deserve to know what has happened to this data, especially with this information about possible breaches with ICE. I would also encourage the council to encourage other local councils, Capitola, Scotts Valley, and Watsonville to do the same steps. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? How many more do we have online? One. Very good. Person online. Good afternoon and welcome.
Hi. This is Brian Peoples. I'm very often involved with Transportation Solutions, most for the Trail Now organization. And I just want to support the Santa Cruz Police and the approval and continued support of the camera systems. We have to use this technology. We need to rely on the experts, and that's the police force. So moving away from supporting our police chief and our police on using this technology to protect our community would be going backwards. Let's continue to use the camera systems to protect our community. There's, if people are afraid of being monitored, well, us citizens who are not breaking the law, we're not going to be afraid of that. So please support the police in supporting these cameras. Thank you.
Anyone else online? So we have now completed oral communications. For those of you who are here on the issue regarding the automatic license plate readers, Councilmember O'Hara and the Vice Mayor vindicated they will be bringing an item back in public session before the body, before the public, on December the 9th. And so you are certainly encouraged to track that and return at that time. We are now completed with oral communications. We are going to take an item out of order. We are going to take item eight, which is a recognition of our good friend, John Bush, who's done a great job for us in the area of public safety for a great number of years. And I would like to call the Chief Bush forward. It's so good to see you, sir. Thank you for your very many years of great public service. I'm going to turn this over to Renee Goldin. And let me tell you why, Chief Bush, because I wanted to have the longest-serving council member to do this recognition because the rest of us got here a little bit later. But she has been here during more of the years of your service, and I wanted to make sure that we got that recognition for you. Welcome, sir, and Councilmember Goldin.
On a personal note, I just want to say thank you for all of your years of service to the community. I've gotten to know you over the years, and I do really appreciate all of the hours of thankless work you do to keep our community safe. And with that, I have a little bit of a proclamation I'm going to read and open it up if anyone else has comments. So whereas on December 11, 2025, John Bush is retiring after almost 28 years of faithful and dedicated service to the city of Santa Cruz and its citizens. And whereas John Bush was hired by the city of Santa Cruz Police Department on February 23 in 1998 as a patrol officer. And whereas during John Bush's distinguished career with the Santa Cruz Police Department, he held several roles. In September 2001, he was appointed as a field training officer, a role which he held until October of 2023, when he was assigned to Investigations Division as a detective, where he was an invaluable asset for three years. He was then promoted to the Sergeant in the Operations Division, serving as a patrol sergeant for 11 years, until he was promoted in December 2019 to Lieutenant overseeing both the Operations and the Investigations Divisions for three years. And whereas on June 22, John Bush was promoted to Deputy Chief of Administration, serving in that role until January of 2025, when he transitioned to the Operations Division and deputy, as deputy chief, overseeing patrol and general department operations. And whereas during Deputy Chief John Bush's tenure, he achieved numerous commendations and milestones. In 2017, he was honored as the department's Officer of the Year. And in March 2019, he was recognized as Employee of the Month. He also received a Chief's Commendation, the Life Saving Award, and the highest level of honor, the Distinguished Police Service Medal. And over the years of duty, John Bush was also the recipient of numerous commendations, accolades from both within the department and the broader community. And whereas Deputy Chief John Bush has been an outstanding example of loyalty, and he has been a tremendous asset to the city of Santa Cruz and its community. And its police department will be long remembered for his 28 years of commendable service. Now, therefore, I, Renee Goldin, on behalf of our Mayor Fred Keely and the entire City Council, do hereby proclaim Thursday, December 11, 2025, as John Bush Retirement Day and in the city of Santa Cruz, and encourage all of its coworkers and citizens in joining me and expressing a heartfelt appreciation for his 28 years of dedicated and exemplary service to the police department and his numerous contributions to the city of Santa Cruz, and wish him well in his retirement. Congratulations.
Chief, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Just a couple minutes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and Chief Escalante. It's truly an honor to be recognized and to receive this proclamation. And I thank you all for taking the time to recognize my years of service. I've had the privilege of serving this city for 20 years, but I was never out there doing it alone. I want to express my gratitude to the many men and women that are here today and the ones before me that I have served with over the years. Their mentorship, guidance, and support have been instrumental in helping me reach where I am today. From the records, techs, and administrative assistants to the chief of police and all the officers in between, each one has played a vital role in my success, and I thank them for their service. Most importantly, I would not be here today if it wasn't for my beautiful wife. Being your husband... Being your husband is the greatest honor of all, and words cannot express Being your husband is the greatest honor of all, and words cannot express the depth of my love and appreciation I have for you. I consider myself the luckiest man to have such a loving and supportive partner by my side all these years. You have been my inspiration, always challenging me to be a better officer, father, and husband. And for that, I will ever be grateful, and I share this recognition with you. Again, once again, thank you, Mayor, for this incredible honor. I am deeply grateful and humbled, and I appreciate all your time.
Chief. You won't be forgotten because you will be remembered for your service. You, Chief, are someone that each one of the city council members knows from either something citywide, something in our district, something happened here or there on multiple occasions while we're serving in public life with you. And every time one of us encounters you, we get a good outcome. We get a real good outcome. It's thoughtful, it's caring, it's intelligent, it's rooted in public safety and caring about our community. That legacy of yours will live on. You will be remembered for that, because we cannot forget your public service, and we'd love you every day. Thank you, John.
Thank you. It's been an honor, sir. Appreciate it.
Okay. Yeah, I know. Yeah. John, John, now that you're all the way back there, come back up here. We have a lot of people want to take a picture with you, so come on up here. Come on all the way up here. Come on up here. We're going to all stand up here. Take our picture with you. Right up here in the middle. Bonnie, stand next to John.
Because he is where he is. Because...
Get you right here. Okay, here we go.
Okay. Thank you.
Aren't they the cutest? Thank you, John. Thank you, every member of the Santa Cruz Police Department. God love you all. We are on item six. This is the Sister Cities Recognition, and I'm going to acknowledge the Vice Mayor.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Tremaine Jones to Superintendent of Recreation, Parks and Recreation, to kick us off.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor. Oh, sorry. Good afternoon, Mayor and Vice Mayor. I'm Tremaine Hatton Jones, Superintendent of Recreation for the city of Santa Cruz. I'm here to welcome our delegation from our sister city of Sestri Levante, Italy. And joined with me today is Corolla Barton, who is the Chair of the Sister Cities Committee.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, council members. Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's honored to be here and to chair this wonderful committee. The Sister Cities Committee this year has been working very diligently to revitalize our relationships with our wonderful cities around the world, and also to work toward a new relationship with the city in Mexico. Today, however, we're talking about our Sestri Levante Subcommittee. And the committee itself here at Santa Cruz has worked to create an opportunity for three distinguished restaurateurs to come and work with our restaurants in Santa Cruz. And there has been, there have been opportunities for them to learn about our city culturally and enjoy the benefits that we have all the time of living in our beautiful city. But also, they've been able to share their passion, their culinary skill, their cultural differences and similarities with our people in Santa Cruz. And it's been quite a lovely experience. Today, I want to thank also the Chair of the Subcommittee, Isabel Tenser, who unfortunately could not be here, and also Ed DeBrennan, who is here. And David Tarazas, who have worked to make this experience possible. So we also want to formally thank and recognize our friends from Italy.
Thank you so much. I'm honored to take this moment to recognize and welcome our three distinguished guests who are visiting, as was just said, from Sestri Levante, Italy. So please join me in welcoming Mattias... Okay, here you go. We can see how good my Italian is, all right? Mattias Sabadini Tocco. Daniele Ballarini.
More than perfect.
Okay. And Raquel Gerardi. Okay, I should become Italian. Our renowned chefs and restaurateurs who are here in Santa Cruz as part of a cultural and culinary exchange that celebrates the enduring friendship between our two cities. While our official city, while our official sister city relationship with Sestri Levante was established in 1980, the roots of our connection run much deeper. In the mid-1800s, immigrants from Riva Trigoso, a coastal village near Sestri, Sestri Levante, journeyed across the Atlantic and made their home here in Santa Cruz. Many of them became fishermen, helping to shape the early identity of our community and contributing to the development of the Santa Cruz Wharf, which remains a proud symbol of our maritime heritage. That legacy of connection built on shared values of hard work, community, and coastal culture continues to thrive today. The presence of our guests this week is a testament to that living history. During their visit, Mattias, Daniele, and Raquel are collaborating with some of our most beloved local restaurants, Mentone in Aptos, Gabriela Cafe, and La Posta, bringing with them the flavors, traditions, and culinary history of Liguria. In doing so, they are not only enriching our local food scene, but also deepening the cultural ties that bound, bind our two cities. Their visit reminds us that sister cities' relationships are not just symbolic, they're active, evolving partnerships that foster mutual understanding, creativity, friendship across borders. And so, in recognition of your contributions to this international exchange, and in honor of the historic and ongoing relationship between the Santa Cruz and Sestri Levante, it is my great privilege to present each of you guests with honorary citizenships of the city of Santa Cruz. This symbolic gesture affirms that you are not only welcome here, you're part of our extended community and family. You carry, you carry with you the spirit of friendship that has connected our cities for generations, and we're proud to recognize you as honorary citizens of Santa Cruz. On behalf of the Santa Cruz City Council and the people of Santa Cruz, I thank you for your visit, for your contributions, and the warmth and goodwill you bring from across the sea. Benvenito a Santa Cruz, and welcome and congratulations.
Cheers.
Do you want to come up for a photo as well? If you have a few words. Few words and then a photo?
Yeah. Yes, please. One by one?
Do Sister Cities, do you guys want to come up? Do you guys want to come up to the screen?
Oh, hi.
Wait, Tremaine, they're going to come up too. They're going to...
Perfetto.
So just a few words about a last opportunity for you guys to visit with these folks. As an example of how they are giving to Santa Cruz, they went to Grey Bears last week and saw 2,000 bags being prepped to go to our older, lower-income seniors. And there on the site, they hatched a plan to have a gnocchi class that will be taught tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. at the Grey Bears at their location on Shana Claire. You'll be preparing gnocchi and giving a class on preparing it for anyone who shows up from the public. And then like Grey Bears does every day, there will be 120 to 150 people, mostly seniors, that will eat the gnocchi that they will have made during the class. So I invite you all, come to Shana Claire, 2710, Grey Bears, tomorrow, 10:00 a.m. Lunch is at 11:20.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You're welcome. He wanted to make some comments. Okay. Please, please.
Okay. Member of city council, good afternoon. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your welcoming, as with such kindness and warm smiles. Here in Santa Cruz, we truly found home away from home. We are very proud to be part of this sister city friendship. It all started thanks to David Tarazas many years ago, when he sent, he came to visit us in Sestri, just to fix in the 1980s relationship. The gesture made for us feels, made us very proud and very connected. During these days, we learned why our ancestor loved this place. We discovered familiar shapes in our fishing boats, the Leudo boats and Rivanetti from Riva Trigoso, the boats that carried wine, food, and life across the Mediterranean Sea. Today, our family is the last activity Vinacheri family in the world. With our Leudo, Nuova Uto Didio, we still say to bring wine from Elba, from Cinque Terre, and from Sardinia. The sea is our history and our bridge between us and you. We want to thank you, some very special people, Enda, June, Patrice, Isabella, David, Sonia, Mayor Fred Keely.
Really, Vice Mayor.
But all of you, all of you. If we forgive anybody, forget about that. We are vinacheri, we are not professional speakers. But truly, we want to thank you, all of you, Santa Cruz, for your kindness, your beautiful community, your beauty, and the love you shared with us in these days. We are honored to have been part of this city, even for just 20 days. We will carry you in our hearts, and we will hope to see you again soon or to welcome you in Sestri Levante, all of you. Your family across the sea with us. Thank you, Santa Cruz. Long live to Santa Cruz. Thank you.
Thank you. I think so.
Good?
We're good, yeah?
Very good. Thank you, my friends. All righty. We are on item number seven. This is a mayoral proclamation declaring November 29th a Small Business Saturday. And no one works closer with small businesses than our colleague, Councilmember Sonia Brunner.
Thank you, Mayor. So every year, Small Business Saturday is a chance to acknowledge the wonderful vibrancy... Ciao. The wonderful vibrancy of our small businesses and what they contribute to our community and the economy. So whereas since its inception in 2010, Small Business Saturday, falling between Black Friday and Cyber Monday, has illuminated the significance of supporting small, independently-owned businesses across the country. And whereas Small Business Saturday is a day dedicated to supporting the diverse range of local businesses that help create jobs, boost the economy, and keep communities thriving across the country. And whereas the city of Santa Cruz celebrates small businesses and the contributions that they make to our local economy and to the community. And whereas small businesses rely on holiday shopping season for much of their revenue and the support of local shoppers to their businesses each year to survive. And whereas 86% of Santa Cruz businesses are small businesses employing nine people or less. And whereas there are over 500 retail businesses in Santa Cruz providing nearly 4,800 jobs. And whereas purchasing goods and services from local small businesses keeps those dollars local and contributes to a more vibrant and sustainable economy. And whereas the city of Santa Cruz encourages all residents and visitors to shop and dine locally, support small businesses, and recognize the impact we can make when we support our local businesses. And whereas businesses across the country will be celebrating Small Business Saturday on November 29th and encouraging shoppers and diners to support local. Now, therefore, I, Sonia Brunner, on behalf of Mayor Fred Keely and the city council of Santa Cruz, do hereby proclaim Saturday, November 29th, 2025, as Small Business Saturday in the city of Santa Cruz, and encourage all citizens to join me in shopping local, supporting local on November 29th and throughout the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Members, we are on, we've already covered presiding officer announcements. We're on statements of qualification, disqualification on either the consent agenda or regular agenda. Councilmember Brunner is recognized.
Out of an abundance of caution related to my employment with the Downtown Association, Agenda Item 18, the library architect.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else seen here? None additions or deletions?
I have none.
Mr. Kundari.
Good afternoon, Mayor Keely and members of the city council. This was a report out on this morning's closed session, which convened at 9:30 a.m. this morning in the courtyard conference room. Councilmember Goldar was absent from the closed session at which the council discussed five items of business, beginning with item one, a conference with labor, with legal counsel concerning liability claims. Those are the liability claims of Pacific Terrace Homeowners Association, care of King Management LLC, claim of David Turner, and the claim of Sonia Rodriguez. Those are also listed this afternoon on your consent calendar for council action as Agenda Item Number 20. Item two was an item of real property negotiations concerning real property owned by Palomar Associates at 1330 and 1344 Pacific Avenue. Council received a report from its negotiator on that item. Item three was a conference with labor negotiators concerning all bargaining groups, SEIU temps, SEIU service employees, supervisors OE3, fire management, Fire IAFF Police Management and Police Officers Association. There was no action to report on that item. Item four was significant exposure to litigation. There were four items discussed at which the council received a report from the city attorney's office. Item five was an item of pending litigation. On that item, the council unanimously voted to ratify the city attorney's decision to join in an amicus brief filed in the case entitled Rhode Island State Council of Churches versus Rollins. That is litigation involving the federal government's suspension of SNAP benefits due to the recent federal government shutdown, and there was no other reportable action.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I would ask Ms. Bush, do we have anything on council agenda that you, a calendar you would like to bring to our attention?
No.
Very good. Thank you. We are on the consent agenda. For those of you unfamiliar with it, we will be taking up items 10 through 33 on one vote. What we will do is have an opportunity for council members to pull an item, make a comment on an item, or ask a question. We will extend that courtesy to folks who are with us as well. Before we begin the consent agenda, I would like to invite up Ms. DeLeone to make presentations and technical updates on items 21 and 23. Ms. DeLeone, good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you, Mayor. For item 21, I would like to correct for the record that the longevity proposal for firefighters' total tentative package should have read July 3rd. I've already worked with our clerk to make sure that the resolution and tentative agreement is updated, but just wanted to call that to your attention. The next item, excuse me, that was item 23 for firefighters, forgive me. For item 21, which is the administrative action... Sorry, I ran over here.
Do it fine.
The administrative action to adopt the MOU for mid-management. The term of that agreement should read beginning August 30th, 2025. There should be no break in service there. There was a little confusion between the resolution. So I would love to make sure that the term is referenced as beginning August 30th. So the recommendation of that part of the resolution will be updated, and I'll forward any attachments necessary.
Those will be included without objection. Let me start now on my left with Councilmember Goldar. Any items on the consent agenda? Councilmember O'Hara, O'Hara, excuse me.
No.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'd like to comment on 14, 15, and 25.
Please do.
Great. Just appreciate the item 14, which is supporting Second Harvest Food Bank with $100,000 for emergency food procurement. Wanted to just daylight that for the public. Glad that we're able to step up in this time of need and help our nonprofit organization and help our community members. So thank you to city manager's team who worked on that. Item 15, this is strengthening our opposition to offshore drilling and seabed mining. I'm happy to see this before the council to consider in joining the offshore oil coalition in our coordination efforts across the state to oppose offshore oil drilling and strengthen our local ordinances. I want to acknowledge Mayor Keely for your decades of work in the past that has gotten us here. And item 25, the Childcare Impact Fee Annual Report. It's really exciting to see $220,718 accrued so far and having it go to our childcare facility at the downtown library. So wanted to daylight that as well. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsom.
Thank you, Mayor. Have a quick comment on item 21, 22, and 23.
Please do.
Want to say really happy to see these items on our agenda. Our city workers are the backbone of our city. They are what makes our city function and run day in and day out. So really happy we can make this investment in our workforce, and thank you to all of our city workers and staff for all your, all your work for our city. On item 26, very excited to see that Bent 103 and 104 on the wharf have been repaired. And I also want to mention how happy I am that construction to repair the end of the wharf is set to begin this month. And that's less than a year than after the incident that occurred there. And it's really a testament to the work of our staff, this council, and our community for quickly rallying around the wharf and working to ensure that it remains a cherished landmark in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brunner.
I have a comment on items 14, 21, 22, 23, 25.
Well, let's get started.
Let's see. Item 14 is the agreement with Second Harvest Food Bank in Santa Cruz County to address food insecurity resulting from the federal government shutdown. And this is an item of approving an emergency food fund, $100,000 to help leverage and pool together to support...
together to support our community who have food insecurity through this time, and just absolutely necessary that we step in and contribute to this. We have many people working on this, so I just wanted to highlight that across the county, collaborative efforts. Thank you. Item numbers 21, 22, and 23 are the 21 Mid-Management Memorandum of Understanding, 22 are SEIU International Local 521, and 23, the International Association of Firefighters. And, you know, as many people know, negotiations have been happening and to acknowledge and invest and continue to work together in a process that supports our city workers who are critical to all of the operations that happen at this municipality, and it's great to see it on the agenda and to be able to implement new and support in these MOUs. So over these three-year contracts, happy to see an agreement. 25 is the Development Impact Fee for Childcare Impact Fee. We've been working on this for so long, so I am so happy to see this report, the dollar amount, as Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson stated, over $200,000 that will be used. Childcare is probably one of the next affordable housing, one of the most talked about items of affordability that I hear from, from community and hardworking, working parents, and this is also another way that we have worked to contribute to this, so thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Trigaro on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing further from me. I'll just simply echo the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Brunner's comments.
Very good, thank you. This would be the opportunity for anyone who's with us in council or in chambers or online to make a comment on the consent agenda. This would be your opportunity to do so. Do we have anyone online?
No one with their hand up, no.
I am shocked and dismayed. Motion on the consent agenda, matters back before the body.
I'll move.
There's a motion by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Newsom. Debate or discussion, seeing here and none, the clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Trigaro.
Excuse me, hold for just a second. I'm sorry, did I move too quickly? Well, now do you think that we're all paying attention? You're gonna go for this or not? The clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Goldar.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Aye.
And Mayor Keely.
Aye, with an admonishment to Councilmember Goldar. All right. We are moving now to item 34. Give me a moment while I get to item 34. Here we are. We have two items on our consent public hearing. This is items 34 and 35. Let me see if members have comments, wish, was our Councilmember Goldar on the consent public agenda? Councilmember O'Hara, Vice Mayor? Councilmember Newsom, Councilmember Brunner, Councilmember Trigaro, anyone who's with us which should comment on either of these items, public hearing is open. Anyone online commenting on this? Public hearing is closed, matters back before the body, pleasure of the body.
I'll move the consent public hearing.
Councilmember O'Hara moves, see recommendations in the public hearing. Councilmember Trigaro seconds, debate or discussion, seeing here and none, the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro.
Aye.
Brunner.
Aye.
Newsom.
Aye.
Goldar.
Aye.
O'Hara.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Keely.
Aye. Motion passes as ordered. We are on file item number 36, Residential Demolition Conversion Authorization Permits Related to Displacement of Tenants. Ms. Stanger and Ms. Landry will be making staff presentations. I suspect there will be other comments on this. Good afternoon to the staff. Thank you for your fine work.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I will be giving the presentation today. So this presentation is an overview of some proposed amendments to the municipal code related to relocation assistance. So the proposed amendments are based on two housing element objectives. The city's housing element includes over 100 objectives that have been approved by the city and certified by the state of California that should be implemented over the next eight years, and objectives each have their own timeline that they need to stay on. And so we have two objectives today, 5.5B and 6.4B, and they have deliverables due this year. 5.5C calls, I'm sorry, 5.5B calls for the city to adopt anti-displacement policies, programs, or code amendments, meaning creating measures that would support tenants and especially financially vulnerable tenants in the event that they are displaced from their rental unit. Objectives 5.5B and 6.4B also both seek to amend the municipal code, to align with state law, to give lower-income tenants right of first refusal for a new unit if they are displaced from their unit due to demolition. Oh, there it is. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so in terms, for residential demolition, the basic thing for the proposed amendments is to align with state law for relocation assistance, replacement housing, and write a first refusal. And what this means is that for relocation assistance, that means that the landlord is required to pay a tenant a certain amount of money to cover things like moving expenses or securing tenancy for a different unit elsewhere. Replacement housing, generally speaking, is a requirement for the property owner to provide a deed-restricted, affordable replacement unit when a lower-income household is displaced by demolition of their unit. And write a first refusal means that a lower-income tenant would have the option to rent or purchase a designated lower-income unit in the new housing development before that option is given to anyone else. So state law has specific and objective requirements for each of these types of assistance and what that assistant must be, and the updates to our code basically align with state law in that way. So second, we are adding objective findings in place of subjective findings that cannot legally be made for housing development projects. So subjective findings are based on opinion rather than fact. For example, the current regulations include a finding to decide whether the project would have substantial adverse impacts on housing for low and moderate income households. What are substantial adverse impacts? That can mean different things to different people, and state law does not allow us to use these subjective findings for housing development projects. So the proposed amendments would eliminate these and rely on specifically defined objectives, standards instead that are already included in the municipal code and the state law. Because the subjective findings are being removed and only objective requirements remain, staff also recommends streamlining this approval process for demolition of three or more units. And currently, this would require approval by the planning commission, and the recommendation is to allow a staff-level approval without a public hearing. There are also some language clarifications proposed in that part of the municipal code to make sure that the existing regulations are clear. So moving on to short-term displacement related to dangerous conditions, the city's relocation assistance ordinance requires a landlord to pay relocation assistance to tenants when they are required to leave their unit to comply with enforcement of a code compliance case relating to unsafe or hazardous living conditions. The current requirement for relocation assistance is the equivalent of four months of rent. However, sometimes code compliance cases arise where the tenant is required to leave only temporarily in order to abate a dangerous or hazardous condition. Some examples include utility repairs or replacements, road mold remediation or water damage repairs, or roof replacement or leak repair. And the existing regulations don't really address these temporary cases. For example, if a tenant needed to relocate just for a few days to have utilities repaired completed, the current regulations would still require the full four months of relocation assistance to be paid. So the proposed amendments create three tiers of relocation assistance depending on the duration of displacement. For a displacement of zero to 14 days, the relocation assistance would be one month of rent plus $300 for each adult tenant. The second tier is for 15 to 59 days, and that bumps to three months of rent plus $300. And then finally, the last tier is a displacement of 60 days or more, and that's four months of rent plus the $300. So just to summarize, these changes would make it clear and transparent for both landlords and tenants in a situation where temporarily vacating the unit is required to comply with code compliance action on dangerous living conditions. That's the summary of the proposed changes. Next steps, if city council approves the first reading of the ordinance today, it will move on to a second reading on December 9th. There are some small portions of the ordinance that are part of the local coastal program implementation plan, and then they would go to be submitted to the coastal commission for approval that we would anticipate early in 2026. I'd also like to note that staff does anticipate additional anti-displacement work after this, including implementation of council's October 28th direction related to monitoring and enforcement of the city's local preference criteria for affordable housing. Staff is also seeking additional input from the community in line with housing element, Objective 5.5B, for additional anti-displacement policies. We are having a virtual community meeting tomorrow, November 19th, at 6:00 p.m. You can find details and a link for that community meeting on the city website, and we are welcoming all community input. So finally, I have the recommendation from the agenda report up on the screen. This concludes the staff presentation, and we are available for any questions. Thank you.
Mr. Butler. Thank you, Mayor. We have one additional recommended addition that we've been working on with the city attorney's office.
Can you keep talking because my keyboard died?
It is related to the definition of tenant that is identified in the relocation ordinance, and I will...
Hold for just a second. Let my chair, but you can get there first.
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Bush, you good? Okay, Mr. Butler.
It's the definition of tenant, and it's a clarification that for purposes of this...
Hold again for a second. Are we gonna put this up?
Yep.
Can we put this up? We'll just hold here for a second until we get this all aligned.
I'll give you a moment to read it.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Butler. Thank you, Ms. Bush.
So that's a recommended addition to the definition to clarify who qualifies as a tenant, and sorry for that late addition, but we were just coordinating on it.
That's exactly what we were gonna do. It's good, all right. Let me see if there are questions by members. Question, Ms. O'Hara. Excuse me, Councilmember O'Hara.
Yeah, thank you. This may be a question that Councilmember Trigaro was gonna ask, but on the red-line version of the track changes, it notes that city properties, properties owned by the city are not subject to relocation assistance. Could you provide some details on why would we exempt ourselves from providing that?
Sure, thanks for that question, Councilmember O'Hara, and I think I failed to introduce myself earlier. Lee Butler, Director of Planning and Community Development. So thank you for that question. So there are really two components to this exemption. The first is related to the relocation assistance when someone has a large rent increase, and part of this is to safeguard the city in the future. We aren't sure what type of properties we are going to own. You'll notice in those exemptions, there is a separate exemption for deed-restricted affordable units, and so all deed-restricted affordable units are exempt from the large rent increase portion of the ordinance. But the city could have a mixed-income project, for example, and the market rate units, even if they're held at below-market rate, could, for example, be subsidizing the lower-income units, and there may be some situation in the future where that rent would need to be raised in order to continue the subsidies for the low or very low-income units. It's a hypothetical situation at this point, but it does provide those additional protections for the city, should the city have some of those types of properties in the future. That's part A. Part B is related to people that would need to vacate due to unsafe or hazardous living conditions, and that's only when the city determines that it's unsafe or hazardous. And again, hypothetical situations, but we were actually contemplating this as it relates to, say, some of the transitional encampments that we have, for example, and that conversation is part of what spurred the addition that you just saw a moment ago as it relates to the conversations that we were having with the city attorney. It's certainly a council decision that is a policy consideration that you can have. There are some safeguards associated with it, but it's up to the council whether you would like to provide those broader exemptions or more narrow ones. You could have it applied just to the relocation associated with the large rent increase, for example, instead of relocation also for the hazardous living situations. That could be a choice for the council to consider.
Thank you. Follow-up on that, it's a little hard to track the nuances of that, and what I read is kind of a carte blanche. We are exempting ourselves, and we have, we have a lot of, and we are growing in our capacity for having tenants in affordable and non-market-rate housing. I would be interested in understanding what language would look like with that narrower approach, but I have no idea how to get there.
I think the easiest way, if you wanted to do a narrower approach, the easiest way would be to exempt the city properties just from the large rent increase provisions, and that is specifically what the affordable housing presumption, the deed-restricted affordable housing exemption does. It applies that exemption just to the large rent increase. So that, if you were looking at narrowing it, that would be a recommendation that I would have if the council wanted to put some bookends on that.
If you had time to write something down, you are the city manager.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
While the rest of us have this conversation, that would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Yes, you're welcome.
Other questions, comments by members? Councilmember Goldar is recognized.
I have a question about the rent, the four months. I don't know why I can't find it right now, but I thought when I read my packet that it said market rate rent. Is that correct, or is it, is it rent, the rent that the person pays or owed?
No, it's what, my apologies. Laura Landry, Code Compliance Manager, thank you, city council member. The, it is the market rate, it's the HUD market rate for that particular year. So it's three months, but if it's an immediate relocation, it's an additional 30 days, so it's a total of four months of relocation based on the market rate.
So I think the problem that I had with this ordinance, I was talking over end of last week with the city manager, a concern I have is that a lot of the units that are affordable, not deed-restricted, but by nature, because they've started to depreciate over the years, and maybe tenants have been there for a long time, inevitably, there's gonna have to be repairs. And so, community members came to me and said, an example was there was a house with six UCSC students living in a three-bedroom house, and they were displaced for a repair, I don't know what kind, and they had to pay the six students market rate rent where the students weren't paying... students weren't paying market rate, they were paying far below market rate. And so it was a burden on the landlord financially to pay that. And so, a concern I have is that by wanting to help the tenants, somebody in that position, it's just a ma and pa that has a single family home, that they might just sell the house. And I guess that will put it back in the housing market in a different way, but I'm just conflicted as to why we're doing market rate, and I get that that's what they would have to pay, but if they weren't contributing that, why the burden would be on the landlord to pay that much? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. When it comes, the amendments that are being, the amendments that are being proposed right now are to address specifically situations where, for instance, the relocation might not be the full length of the four months. It'll address the temporary relocation. As far as the market rate, that's something that I'm... Yes, the HUD market rate was something that was approved through city council at the time that the relocation was established.
I can add some to that as well. So I think there are a couple of things to consider here. One is that we have right now, in that situation that you outlined, our code could actually require relocation expenses even if we haven't deemed that property unsafe or hazardous, and that's part of the challenge. The way that this, and so we would have people that, all right, you need to leave for repairs, and that could be considered displacement. And that's part of the challenge that we've seen in implementing this. The way we have reworded this has the requirement that the city, so the relocation expenses only take effect if the city requires the property be vacated due to hazardous or unsafe living conditions. So let me give you a distinction there. Yeah, so by way of example, if you have a leaky faucet in a bathroom, and that repair requires the bathroom, it's the only bathroom in the house, to be out of commission for, let's say, two days while the plumber's there, that is not going to trigger relocation assistance under the proposed ordinance. But let's say you have that same repair, and it causes the subfloor to degrade to the point where it's no longer structurally safe to be in that bathroom at all. Well, that, now those tenants don't have access to a bathroom, we would deem that property unsafe, and at that point, the relocation assistance would kick in. But that distinction isn't always readily apparent in our current ordinance, and that's some of the problems that we saw. And so then, we also had this provision where it was a three-month rent or four months if it's less than 30 days' notice. Those same examples could be applied in that, you know, maybe that subfloor is repaired in two days, but it's, it would be a four-month payment under the current program. So those are some of the problems we're trying to fix. And as it relates to the market rate rent, it is based on that market rate rent, but it's for the overall unit. And part of that is because even if someone is in a lower-than-market-rate location, if they're displaced, they're going to have to go and try to find something. And so that HUD market rate value is what determines, you know, how much it is that they're likely going to need to have to spend if they go out and find something on the market for a temporary period of time.
Thank you for clarifying that. I think I'm still a little conflicted in that I think it de-incentivizes landlords wanting to keep long-term tenants. You're not going to want to keep someone year over year and not raise their rent if potentially, when something does inevitably break, you have to do repairs, this kind of thing happens. I just, that's why I'm conflicted. I think my other question, I think you asked it, and the other, oh, the other thing, if, for the one adult, I had one more question with that, the 300 per adult, does it say anywhere specifically that the adult on the lease? Because sometimes I know people move, it is, okay. Thank you. I didn't quite catch that. That concludes my question.
Thank you. Councilmembers? Other questions or comments? This will be the opportunity for the public to make comment on this item. Do we have anyone online, Ms. Bush? Matters back for the body, pleasure of the body.
I'll move staff recommendation, but I'd also like to see that language around some of those guardrails around the exemption.
Okay, let's hold on for just a second here. The motion, let's start with the basic motion is moving the staff recommendation. Madam Vice Mayor, would you like to add additional direction?
I'd like to add additional direction with specific guardrails around the city exemption, and I'm hoping Director Butler can help out. And those were my questions. I just didn't re-ask them because they were asked.
While we're in the process?
I just sent it over one minute, actually, like 30 seconds.
We are still assembling the motion. I don't need a second yet. We're going to get the motion. No, I need your help here. The motion is to adopt a staff recommendation together with additional direction. The vice mayor is looking to you for some assistance on that language.
Great. First, I'd like to have the vice mayor, if you wouldn't mind, confirm that you would like the language that we coordinated with the city attorney that we presented at the beginning. Great. So we would have that related to the definition of tenant, and then these are from the exemptions section of the ordinance, and the underlined component is there where it would, it would just apply to that one part instead of both parts of this ordinance. And I put the second exemption just for reference, because that's the affordable housing, deed restricted affordable housing exemption, and it's done in a similar manner.
Okay, that language works for me. So staff recommendation with the added definition of tenant and items D and E as presented by Director Lee.
Ms. Bush, good. Captured the motion? Good, okay, very good. There's a motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember O'Hara, debate and discussion. Madam Vice Mayor, you may open on your motion.
I appreciate this as part of our larger effort around supporting renters in our community. This has been talked about extensively as part of the Housing Element chapter that we worked on for a couple of years, and then the Housing Element Subcommittee. I also appreciate Councilmember Golders' questions. I think those are definitely worth considering and thinking through as we move forward with other relocation assistance policies in the future. So thank you for bringing those up, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
For the debate or discussion? Councilmember Golders, I'm very taken with the issue you're raising, and I'm going to support this motion. I hope that you'll grab a hold of that tail on there, and we'll hear more about this. I think you raised a very good issue, ma'am. Thank you. Further debate or discussion? Standing here, and now the clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Renner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golders?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kellentari Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keely?
Aye. Motion passed and since awarded. We are going to move to item 37, and as we are watching the changing of the staff guard here as we move on to that, I want to acknowledge and recognize former mayor and city council member who was mayor in 2014, Lynn Robinson. Welcome. Good to see you back in chambers again. Thank you for all your good work at Valley Churches United and everything else you do in the public space. Thank you so much. Mr. Van Waal, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. Matt Van Waal, Principal Planner for Advanced Planning. I'm here with Susan Walton, our planner as well on this project.
Good afternoon, Ms. Walton.
And here with us from afar is also Tiffany Wise West, our Resiliency Manager, who also worked extensively on this with us, too. All right, great. So here we're talking to you about the Local Coastal Program update, specifically the Beaches and Bluffs Hazards Adaptation Chapter, proposing to add to the Local Coastal Program or LCP, as we'll refer to it often. And the LCP is part of the Coastal Act when it was adopted in 1976 to ensure public has access to the coast and coastal resources and to protect sensitive marine and coastal habitats. Under the Coastal Act, coastal cities and counties are required to adopt a local coastal program to guide development in the coastal zone, which is around about 3,000 feet inland from the high tide line. And the LCP contents really meant to guide development decisions in this coastal zone. Our current LCP that we're still using today was adopted in 1994 under the previous 1990 to 2005 general plan. Those policy chapters in our current LCP include coastal access, recreation and visitor-serving uses, marine environment, land resources, development policies, and there's also a land use chapter that's separate. And updates to all of these chapters are also forthcoming in our work, and we're expecting to be doing those updates in the next couple of years here. So what's really missing in all of this is the fact that, you know, this was approved in 1994, and there's really no discussion on resiliency, climate change, and sea level rise in this very important coastal document. And just a little quote here, too, you know, the coast is the front line of the climate crisis, and we're seeing that loud and clear with, you know, West Cliff and the wharf and, you know, the recent damage that the storms have brought in the last couple of years. And so, and also the Coastal Commission, too, has been calling for, they've had guidance on this in the last 10 years now, that jurisdictions seek to include this discussion on resiliency, climate change, and sea level rise in their LCPs. So we're responding to both this overall need as well as Coastal Commission guidance. And so, as we started to think about where to include this work more, we started, you know, we've done extensive Coastal Commission coordination throughout this process, and it's been over five years now that we've been working closely with them. During this time, coordinating with the Coastal Commission, we decided to break this into two phases, as I mentioned before. Updating all the other chapters of this, of the LCP would come later, and this really important newer work that's not in our current LCP at all, this Beaches and Bluffs Hazards and Adaptation Chapter would go forward now, given the level of coordination that we would need with Coastal Commission and our, in our community on this, on this work. So that's the phasing piece of this. Other few key points to acknowledge, too, in coordinating with the Coastal Commission, there were some areas where they were really looking for a lot more detail than we had had right now. And what we eventually came up with was this idea of creating these shoreline adaptation management plans that would, that would more specifically look at our three sections of the coast, West Cliff, Main Call, and East Cliff, in greater detail over the next year or so, to provide that additional information to the community and Coastal Commission, but was detail that we didn't want to include specifically in this chapter. So we've been working on that, and as you know, Tiffany and her team have the Ocean Protection Council grant to be working on those right now, and have already started that process. Few of the things that came out of this, too, were the 50-year community vision for West Cliff, as well as the five-year roadmap. And so aligning with those documents and those processes was important throughout this, too. And then, of course, just in general, the ongoing community engagement over these last five-plus years and all the city department coordination, especially with our Public Works and Parks teams. So really, through this process, we came up with six key goals. Keep public beaches and access open and safe. Use signs to guide decisions and update hazard maps regularly. Avoid or limit new construction in high-risk areas. Monitor erosion and coastal changes each year and after storms. Prioritize nature-based solutions like beach replenishment or living shorelines over harder engineered approaches such as concrete seawalls where appropriate, and align with the local Hazard Mitigation and Climate Adaptation Plan and the West Cliff 50-year vision and five-year roadmap. And so we've had two different rounds of public review drafts that have came out the most recent. One was this past summer, and we received a number of comments on that draft and responded to many of them. Some key ones I want to note here are, we heard from Save the Waves and that community group about adding a lot more surfing language and information around surfing resources. We've responded to that quite a bit and added, added a lot of surfing language throughout the document, both in kind of the narrative form, speaking to surfing more, and it's important to Santa Cruz, but also in many, many policies throughout to adding surfing more clearly in those policies, in their importance in this work. We've also received some public comments around that alignment with the five-year roadmap specifically and the council direction that was, that we received in 2024, and we did specifically change one policy in particular to better align with that, with those policies or with that council direction. We also added a takings clause as well as, that was per Smart Coast, California, their comment letter. And then Coastal Commission had final minor comments as well since that public draft that we also responded to. And I just want to note, too, that this work certainly is not in a vacuum. I've mentioned, you know, we've been working over five-plus years with a lot of people throughout this, but there's even more work going on, and a lot of this is, a lot of this is Tiffany's work. I'm not going to go into all this, but we are kicking off Resilient Coast 2.0, which is a really important part of this, and also, you know, the other update work that I've mentioned as well. So this is still, it's a very large, broad policy document, but it still fits into a lot of other key resiliency work that we're doing along the coast. So with that, here's the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Complete all the staff presentations on this item. Good? Thank you very much. Questions or comments by the members? Councilmember Golders? Yeah, well, we're going to start with questions, then we'll go out to the public, then we'll come back. So, okay, let me just see, questions by members? I think Councilmember Golders eager to hear from the public. Questions or comments? The vice mayor is recognized.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your work on this and the various iterations of it, and for hearing the public's input and incorporating as much as you did. I, let's see, where do I want to go? So I appreciate that the 50-year vision and roadmap are named and mentioned in the agenda report, but would also like to see that in the introduction section of the Beaches and Bluffs chapters. Been communicating with Matt and Director Butler over email about that, because it's, it has informed, the Beaches and Bluffs chapters, previous iterations has informed the 50-year vision, and the 50-year vision has also equally informed, I believe, the Beaches and Bluffs. I think it's important to name that in this body of work. I want to ask about, I'm trying to, the reason why I pause is, and maybe this is why Councilmember Golders pausing, is to think about how to ask this question. I want to ask about section BB7, Public Projects Along West Cliff, specifically BB7G. I see that all along this section, there have been changes from prioritize to explore as was recommended by council and members of the public. And then BB7G was changed from prioritize to support. I wonder if you could explain that, how that piece, how G fits into the rest of the pieces, and what are the implications of support rather than prioritize, rather than explore? Is that a good way to ask the question? Okay.
Yeah, thank you for that, Vice Mayor. Yeah, thank you for that, Vice Mayor. So, yeah, in this case, based on that council direction, Policy 7F, we thought very clearly was was connected to the, you know, the West Cliff one-way versus two-way conversation, and we we understood the need to change that from prioritize to explore. It made a lot of sense in that case. Policy 7G, though, that was more related to the realignment work that's already going on along parts of West Cliff, and the desire there was to still support emergency access and access for recreational or recreation users as part of that alignment process that's ongoing and existing right now. So we thought it was a little bit different than the council direction to, you know, prioritize versus explore. We did have it as prioritize before, it could stay prioritize, but we did soften it a bit because we could, you know, there is the word, you know, realignment in there, and there was, you know, maybe some concerns that it was still related to that council direction in 2024 as well.
And so just to be really clear, so that piece is not related to one-way versus two-way. It is realignment, and and can you give an example of what's in, what's in place right now, what we're working on? I mean, I think I know, but can you give an example for the rest of?
Yeah, I think, for instance, like the the 800 West Cliff realignment that's moving inland towards, you know, Lighthouse Field. Yeah, that'd be a great example there.
Okay. Maybe Councilmember Golda wants to ask the Save the Waves question?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm I'm complete for now. Thank you.
I'm I'm just wondering if you can clarify why we're not putting a map with the surf breaks in the beaches and bluffs chapter along with the recreation chapter, I guess? There's a reason why we're not naming them.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. Yeah, we did hear from Save the Waves on on wanting that detail in this chapter. We we felt that level of detail and and the topic itself of surfing was more appropriately suited to the recreation chapter. In addition to that, just the the amount of additional coordination it would take both with Coastal Commission as well as community engagement around adding in all those additional pieces from this community organization into this very long-living LCP document, and considering whatever commitments and requirements come out of that from the city side, needs a lot more time and and analysis. And given that we are going to be working on the recreation chapter over the next year or two, that seemed like an appropriate place to to put a lot of that work.
I mean, we would, we have them all kind of named already. Would it be too hard or too cumbersome to, if you already plan on putting it there, to add it there? I guess I'm just, I hear you, and I hear them, that it it seems appropriate in both from their perspective in terms of looking forward at future policies.
I mean, the the map itself could go in, but it would be incongruous certainly to the rest of the document. That's a much more broad-based policy document, and I think it would lead to some confusion about what it's intending to do and
Okay.
and how to use that map going forward.
Mr. Benoit, if I might follow up on the on the council member's question, I'm, Councilmember Golda, what is it you would like to say? What is what is your objective here? Because we, there may be a way to do this.
Yeah, I was just hoping to see the surf breaks labeled somewhere as an amendment. I mean, there's the other map that has like the butterfly habitat or and the other resources that are out there. I'd love to see them named and labeled on a map. It's not that many.
Yeah, I
Does that make sense?
If if I met Mr. Benoit, I I think we all do a lot of ocean work generally, right? We've had items on here about OCS and offshore oil drilling, a number of other things. We work on ocean issues a lot here in the Surfing City, never be confused with Surf City. And I do think whether we're working with Save the Waves or frankly, the Coastal Commission or anybody else, this is in the sweet spot, it seems, about the kinds of things we care about and priorities. So help me with this about whether identifying those surf breaks in this context could be made to fit.
Yeah, it it certainly is great work, and we want to continue figuring out a way to, you know, support that work, but also bring it into this document. I do think the recreation chapter that's forthcoming gives us more time to work on that, both with them and with Coastal Commission. In terms of the maps itself, Councilmember Golda had mentioned, you know, an additional item as part of this is to bring our LCP up to date with our vegetation and sensitive habitat maps as well, a little bit separate item from this, but it is included in there. That map, those maps were already approved as part of our general plan and went through Coastal Commission approval at, or they went through council approval at that time and Coastal Commission approval. So the idea there was just to clean that up and bring those maps back in. I don't know if bringing in the surf break maps is is quite the same.
I wonder if there is an other way to do that, perhaps, rather than if if the maps might not be, if this isn't the time or place to do the maps, I wonder if a way to get to the general lady's question is a more narrative way where we list those somehow in this document as issues that we care about or identifying characteristics of our coastline in the city, somehow to get that on the record in here. And there may be a later other place where we can expand on that, perhaps, but I think what you're hearing from the councils is pretty important to us. Is there a way to do that? Mr. Butler?
Thanks for that question. So if we are referencing things broadly, like in an introduction, for example, that, I think, doesn't have the same level of of policy implications as would be the case as if we were modifying the policies themselves or adding additional exhibits.
Right.
And so changes to the introductory text
Find a place there.
is less.
Councilmember Golda, sound good to you? The Vice Mayor has an idea.
I I think the intent is that it does have policy implications, and so maybe that's where the challenge is, is if if we are naming these surf breaks in our beaches and bluffs and we are recognizing them, then when we make policy decisions around our shoreline, we are considering these beaches and bluffs. So I I think that that's the intent, is why we want to name the surf breaks in this document in particular.
So I think, as as Matt alluded to before, in all the changes that we made to the policies themselves, that does actually, that already incorporates the the references to surfing and the various protections. So things like the minimizing armoring and monitoring armoring impacts to surfing and supporting nature-based solutions and supporting ongoing coordination with organizations like Save the Waves, including for monitoring. So that policy support is already there, and it's a high-level policy support, as is appropriate for an LCP document. I think, you know, the question of whether or not the specific surf breaks are listed, you know, if if we put something like that in the background, it's not going to create a need to, i- if we put it in the introduction, for example, that's not going to create a need to have additional coordination with the Coastal Commission. But I'll note, you know, we probably met with the Coastal Commission 40 times to wordsmith every single word, and I wasn't in all those, but Matt and Susan were in all of those discussions. And so, you know, this this has had a lot of very detailed analysis, and and we also have a grant timeline that we're working on. We have to, we have a deliverable.
Okay.
So that that's just part of the concern about adding policies or adding exhibits, but less concerning if if we're adding something to the context statement in the introduction.
Councilmember Golda?
Just wondering if instead of it's on page four under beaches, bluffs, and shoreline area resource protection, it's a sentence that says offshore resources, which are part of the Santa Cruz Surfing World Reserve? If you could just change it to say, something where you're adding the World Surfing Reserve and the 13 surf spots located in the shoreline hazard evacuation area associated with the four zones along West Cliff.
Well, they are considering that. Well, they're considering that.
They're they're not naming them, but just identifying that there's a number.
Mr. Benoit, how's that strike you?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's okay. Are those surf breaks, those are designated by Save the Waves, or are those more?
Yes, the ones that we, they presented when they came.
Other groups.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Ms. Bush, remind me, do we have a motion on the table?
No.
I didn't think so.
Sorry.
There's so many people respond to Ms. Bush.
I know, I'm just trying to get, I kept this up like a
Yes, right. All right, very good. Other questions or comments by members? Okay, let me see if there's members in public who wish to make comments on this item. Ms. Greenside, good afternoon, welcome to the council meeting.
Thank you, good afternoon, and I appreciate the question asked, and I appreciate Mr. Benoit's response. However, the local coastal program will be a document for quite a few years. Council will change, staff may change. And I feel that the wording, along with the quote, which is the reference to, quote, "trail realignment, which may involve permanent removal of parking and reconfiguration of the roadway," could be open to different interpretations than was shared, because it is a general statement. So I would hope that you would keep the verb "explore" rather than "support," because there's so, permanent removal of parking, reconfiguration, there may be some in the community who may not support that, and you will be locked into supporting that if it appears in the LCP in that way. So I'd I'd appreciate your consideration of that. Just a couple of other points. The, in the introduction, it mentioned about the, I guess we call them revetments now, am I accurate, that that's what we used to call riprap? I don't, there's a reference that they can fail, so the damage can be all at once, which affects averages. I didn't see anywhere in the document, and it was a long document, and I found it was a bit repetitive, but I saw no reference to the maintenance of the revetments. And I think that's a very important issue, because when we had these big storms and the failure of West Cliff, the first comment quoted in the newspapers was from a city engineer who said, "The areas that failed were the areas of riprap," I think the term he used, "which had not been maintained. Where it had been maintained, there was no damage." That was the last we heard about revetment maintenance. Then it was climate change, sea level rise, increasing in storms. So I'd ask you to look at that. And the last thing I'll say is, or share in the time, you know, the city has a five-foot easement on all of the properties along West Cliff, but that fact, and I pointed it out numerous times, has been buried. I think it's important that it is recognized and put back into this document. If you're going to have something about takings, it should be acknowledged that the city has that five-foot easement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to provide comment on this item? Madam Mayor, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and council members and staff. One thing that I'd like to, so I got some things clarified by Lee Butler coming up, and so we are on a fast track because this needs to get to coastal. LUP, I looked at everywhere in the document, the only thing I could find in planning was LUP is land use permit, but I don't think that that acronym is appropriate. So maybe someone could ask that if I'm wrong on what LUP is, because it's sitting in a lot of the documentation saying LCP, then LUP, and coastal. My concern with the document is that I don't, there's a lot of ambiguity or vagueness in it. I think it's just in nature of what we're talking about, because a lot of it's unknown, but infrastructure is used a lot. But when you look at our city, we're 12 square miles. We have an amazing experience that most communities and even our coastal communities would love to have what we have along West Cliff area, along East Cliff area, along the main beach. So those are our bluffs, except for the main beach area. And on those bluffs, in my mind, we have arterial roadways, West Cliff Drive, East Cliff Drive. It's never mentioned, it's never really referred to. There's one point, West Cliff Drive's mentioned, if there is the removal or bringing it inwards, but also removal. But it's just, there's not clarity in this document from my perspective. I also want to just say to you, as someone that sat there, and I've said this before, I learned it from Emily Riley, you make sure who's not in the room. So a planning commission meeting that happened just last month had nobody in the room. This is usually an item, as you know, I'm trying to pay attention, I just bumped into it last night, I don't know why, I had a spidey sense, like, well, let me see what's, and here we have a, something big to me, because you're about to make more policy that we need to get to Coastal Commission, and yet, who's in the room to talk about this item from the, who, the, I, I don't live on West Cliff, wouldn't I? But there's some items in there referring to when you bought your property and what you can do with that property and how you can protect that property. That's fascinating to me, but I, no, I don't know. So sometimes you have to see who's not in the room, but I think you're on a timeline where you can't pause here. But what I really want you to acknowledge is our roadway infrastructure and how important that piece is. It's not described as an artery to anything, and yet, it's huge neighborhoods that are attached to that. I'm now a daily walker on West Cliff, trying to do a sunrise and a sunset. Retired recently, that's why. I can't tell you how grateful I am that that is one of the biggest amenities, but it is more than only recreational, and that's only what's being called out, is recreational trails, parking amenities, but not the roadway itself as a roadway arterial. I'm hoping you can pull away, pull some way into that without messing up what you have to do on your timeline. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good to see you again. Further comments? Do we have anyone online? We'll take the first person online. Good afternoon and welcome.
Yes, hi, this is Brian Peoples with Trail Now. We're a local organization advocating to build the coastal trail from Davenport to Waterville in a kindly, cost-effective, and eco-friendly manner. We've been around for well over a decade, and thank you for the report. A lot of this is well-known, we've all known it, and we're asking you to emphasize it more on the trail. And and actually, we want you to go to the RTC and really press upon them the Coastal Act, because the planning they're doing now and the planning they've done over the last decade has not been following this. And so really, we'll appreciate that. And Mayor Keely, you know, a lot of people don't know this, but you're leading the RTC, a great effort, appreciate the work you're doing on the RTC and the city, and so, you know, thank you for that. And I'm hoping that you take this Coastal Act report as another value-added piece of information for your work that you're doing with the RTC and the city, because, you know, at the end of the day, the the RTC has created some very bad conditions, you know, case in point, Seabright and the Harbor Bridge. So, you know, I won't go there, but again, thank you for this report, and I hope that we really do use it in our planning and press upon the RTC to get in, get in line with this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else online? We'll take the next person online. Good afternoon and welcome.
Yeah, hi, this is Garrett. Hey, I'm 37, it's typical government, one-size-pits-all policy, not saying what it means in plain English. The plain English is you clearly care more about sand and beaches than people, even on portions where there are no beaches, and definitely not about individual private property rights, definitely not about the human individual right of self-defense from the elements to protect themselves, and you fear monger about imminent loss of your beloved sand, which sure can be far into the future when we're all quite dead. Instead, you use asinine left to Instead, you use asinine leftist words like environmental justice. The plain English is you seem to want to allow coast erosion to proceed unhindered everywhere, the sea to gobble West Cliff Drive, a major evacuation transportation route, beach access, tourist attraction, and all the homes it wants, wherever, here and there, possibly far into the future. But your immediate policy will be to screw every single one of the cliff bluff homeowners in the now-now, preventing construction on private property by enacting impossible-to-meet requirements, huge setbacks not applying to yourselves, saying not only you probably won't repair cliff erosion breaches to public roadway sections, but probably also refuse at will to repair damaged public utilities, rendering many more houses throughout without function, without notice, and callously even suggest removal of what protections there are that hasten cliff and more destruction. I'm fairly sure if Section 8 people lived on West Cliff, you'd be armoring the coast endlessly with other people's money like the Wall of China. Maybe even a fake citizen initiative to pay for it. Your idea of environmental justice is destroying expensive homes and preventing their construction. Item 37 is all nature good, people bad, screw people. I'm not going to read the rest of it, but honestly, what do you think's going to happen? I mean, it's not, the homes are not in a hazard zone per se. I mean, West Cliff Drive is in a hazard zone, that's the first thing to go. And it's very unlikely that 100 feet is going to drop into the ocean as far as a setback. I mean, we're going to lose West Cliff Drive first. And then what happens? I mean, where the utilities disappear. Then you have stranded homes. And I guess you're betting that's going to happen 75 years from now. But I don't know about that, you could be wrong. And, you know, there's little sea caves forming right now in Mitchell's Cove and other places that, you know, maybe it wouldn't cost much just to fill those up and do this and that. You're just not going there to preserve what we have and push disaster way off into the future. Thanks.
Well, thank you. Anyone else online? Last call, if anyone would like to testify on this item. Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body. Councilmember Golda is recognized.
I would like to move this, I'll, maybe you'll just read it. One, approve the proposed amendments to the City of Santa Cruz Local Coastal Program. And two, acknowledge the determinate, so one and two as written in the agenda packet. And the last one is up there, add development of outreach for, and, where am I, I'm sorry. Interagency coordination on beaches and bluffs. Hazard adaptation chapter, also informed by the 50-year vision for West Cliff. Additionally, the coastal, the community outreach and engagement from the resilient coast effort and 50-year, 50-year vision for West Cliff process informed the beaches and bluffs hazard adaptation chapter. And then I have put three requests to the staff. They're up there, it's A and B on your thing. So explore the wave maps and other Save the Waves report components and inform and where appropriate be integrated into the recreation, visitor-serving uses chapter of the LCP work or other ongoing resilient coast efforts such as shoreline adaptation management plans. And B, evaluate how the city can collaborate with various nonprofits and regulatory agencies on metrics, monitoring efforts around surfing resources such as wave quality, break integrity, and user access. And then finally, the part that I said before on page four, under beaches and bluffs, add the part with the 13 surf spots that I said before. That is my motion.
There's a motion, there is a second.
Oh, second.
Councilmember Golda, you may open on your motion.
I think I said everything that I had to say before, but I'm just, I know this is a really important document that's going to be used for policy and for staff work for years to come. And so I just want to make sure that we are trying to get as much in there as we can. But I'm also sensitive that we have a timeline and that a lot of work has already gone into it. So I hope this threads that needle.
Madam Vice Mayor.
Thank you, I just, I do have one follow-up question around the comment made by Ms. Robinson around the roadway infrastructure and mention of the roadway infrastructure. I wonder if you could respond to why that may be missing and if it's appropriate to add it somewhere where it wouldn't change our timeline, and I may have a friendly amendment.
Mr. Butler.
Thanks for that question, Vice Mayor. There's one policy that I'll point out that does speak to some of the comments we've heard from Jillian Greenside as well as Ms. Robinson. So that is, let me get the number here. It's subsection G of BB-12. And it's repair and maintenance. So the shoreline protective device shall be repaired and maintained as necessary to ensure that it continues to exist in its approved and/or required state, including CDP requirements pertaining thereto. Particularly in relation to ensuring the continued utility and function of the design standard requirements above. Repair and maintenance of a shoreline protective device that is not protecting an existing structure or that is ineligible for armoring under this chapter shall be limited to minimum amount of maintenance necessary. And it goes on, but it's really speaking to the maintenance issue that Jillian asked about in terms of its protection of existing infrastructure. So that's one of the locations.
Which letter is that?
That's G under BB-12.
Okay, okay.
And there may be some others, I can, I can give a quick look as well. That was the first one, I was looking that up in response to some of Jillian's comments.
So does that respond to the roadway infrastructure in particular?
It responds to protection, to maintenance of shoreline protection devices in order to protect existing structures and utilities. So the utilities are considered an existing structure because they predate the Coastal Act, and so, we are able to maintain those and have armoring to protect those.
Okay. Okay, I guess I wouldn't be able to read that and understand that. So I don't know, I don't know if there's a way to clarify that, again, without changing too much of it, that we'd have to start all over.
Matt or Susan, are there other policies that jump out to you that may be more decipherable to, less challenging to decipher?
While you're looking at that, then- Also the question about LUP and defining LUP.
Oh, sure, that's the land use plan.
Land use.
Plan.
Thank you.
Yes.
I could just make one quick comment, Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson. In addition to what I know can be somewhat technical language in the LCP document itself, it does directly tie it and reference the 50-year vision. And there's pretty significant discussion in the 50-year vision with regards to the roadway and commitments that the city have made with regards to its preservation going forward.
The addition that Councilmember Golda just made.
Correct.
Okay.
Susan just made a good point, too, that we'll also be working on our access chapter, which is also forthcoming, which could dive into a lot of that as well.
Strengthen that language, okay. And I'm good, thank you.
Further debate or just?
Sorry, just, I just want to thank you so much for the work on this. I know it's been years in the making and there's been a lot of iterations and a lot of public engagement, so thank you for your work. Sorry, Mayor.
No, no, quite all right. Anytime you want to thank staff, feel free to jump right in. Thank you very much for that. Is there further debate or discussion seen here? None, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Triguero?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye, motion passed, and so ordered. We are on file item number 38, this is adoption of the 2025 edition of the California Fire Code. And Mr. Shields from the Division of Fire Prevention and Fire Marshal make a presentation. Good afternoon, sir, welcome to see you. I mean, good to see you, welcome.
Welcome.
Had the right words, just on the right order. How are you today?
Doing well, thank you, sir.
Good, good, thanks to you and your colleagues for all the fine work you do to protect us every day.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, council, thank you for having me. I'll keep this brief. But before I get into this, I wanted to point out my upper lip. And, yeah. So the month of November is known as the month of Movember. Fire agencies, police agencies, other public service employees will grow out their mustaches for the month of November, calling it Movember. And it's in recognition and support of testicular cancer, prostate cancer, mental health awareness, and suicide prevention. So it's very near and dear to our hearts. So you'll see some of us running around with whatever you want to call this.
You know, actually, since you brought it up, seems like if you're a member of the fire service, you should have a mustache. I don't know about just one month a year, my friend.
And, and, and so some of the firefighters have a difficult time of shaving theirs off to regrow it back. Some grow it quicker than others. I, I want to jump right into code adoption. It was an administrative whoopsie, and I'll take blame for that. This should have been on consent public hearing and not as consent or our public hearing or general business. But this is the triennial adoption of the fire code. We take the state code and make local adoptions and we have very minor changes. There isn't much to it this year. And I had, yes, I did look up triennial, make sure that I was using it properly. So I don't know if there's any questions. I don't really have a presentation because, again, changes were very many.
Members, questions, comments? Please, Councilmember O'Hara.
Is this 18 days of growth, Tim?
Unfortunately, yes. I struggle, yeah.
Now we understand why the mustache is on.
I do know it's a thing either. And Mike came home and I was like, take it off, because we were going somewhere.
And so there, there are organizations-
The other mustache observation.
There are organizations you can donate to for this awareness.
Wonderful.
You guys want to do some research or reach?
Now, on the item in front of us, we have a question or comment. Anybody with us in the public wish to make comment on this item? Matters back before the body, pleasure of the body. Councilmember Golda approves, Councilmember O'Hara seconds. Further debate or discussion, those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries and so ordered. We'll never forget a word you had to say about mustaches. Thank you. And, and, Council, the vice mayor adds on. All right, we are finished with that item.
So on the, just for the record of the minute, Councilmember Newsom was not here for the vote.
But Councilmember, the vice mayor has added on the vote. Thank you very much for being here. Off we go.
I have another one. And I'm back.
Yeah.
Are you on the next item as well?
Yes, sir.
Well. Please proceed.
Mayor, council, Tim Shields, Division Chief Prevention and Fire. Wow, it's been a long time since I've been up here.
Excuse me, by the way, is there anything going on with your upper lip? You knew I had to do that, sir.
And so, again, this is an administrative whoopsie where this should have been in the consent public hearing and not as a general business. This is now the wooey code. Interesting fact that the state of California in their infinite wisdom pulled the wild and urban interface sections out of the fire code and the building code and made its own part within the California state set of building standards. And so we are adopting this with minor changes. This will impact building construction within the wooey area and veg management, but we've already applied this based on previous code cycles. So there's no real changes to practical application.
Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Anyone with us in the public wish to comment on the item? Seen, hearing none, matters back before the body, pleasure of the body. This is motion by Councilmember Brunner to meet staff recommendation, second by Councilmember Triguero. Debate or discussion on the item, seen, hearing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmembers Triguero?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Golda?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson?
Aye.
And Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion passed and so ordered, thank you. Chief Odie, thank you to the women and men of your department every day, every night, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, taking care of all of us, thank you. We're on item 40, this is a Harvey West Park Design and Program Assessment. Mr. Elliott will be here, Mr. Downing, park planner, will make a presentation. We have staff material in our packet. Mr. Elliott, good afternoon, thank you for the photo, by the way, it's very kind of you.
Yep, thank you. All right, thank you, Mayor and City Council, for the opportunity to present the final Harvey West Park Design and Program Assessment today. This is a project we've been working on for over a year with robust community engagement and outreach with our pickleball community, our swimming community, trails community. Everything okay? All right. So a lot of, a robust outreach on this. We're pleased to bring the final vision, really looking at the future of Harvey West Park to the council and the community today. We've got our project team here. Mr. Noah Downing, Mike Godsey, and Patricia Fonteca Flores with CMG, who will give the presentation today. Will be happy to answer questions at the end of the presentation. Thank you.
Very good. As you're approaching, let me thank the Parks Department for all the great work at the Grant Street Park and every place else. I know Councilmember Triguero and I are really thrilled to see all the families and folks in the community over at Grant Street Parks. I wanted to use this opportunity. Good afternoon, sir, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Keeley, Vice Mayor Calentari Johnson, and City Council. I'm pleased to present the outcome of this process. Next slide, please. Going to just briefly, oh, sorry, go over the agenda. We're going to, it's been a long meeting, we're going to try to speed through some of this, but there is a lot to cover. Going to discuss the process, the importance of the park, some of the vision and goals, how we arrived at them, the recommendations, what we heard from the public in response to them, and some strategies for phasing and implementation, and then end with the recommendation. Terms of introduction, like what is the Harvey West Design and Program Assessment and its recommendations? It's really an evaluation of current conditions, sets a long-term vision. It's a set of goals and recommendations for improvement. It facilitates community discussions and helps advance future projects. And we really focused on the design and use within the developed portions of the park, and that's outlined in the dark border. Terms of the process, we went through a series of phases. The first was discovery. We assessed some of the current conditions, we reached out to various stakeholders, some of which include youth sports groups, Kirby, some of the adjacent businesses that utilize the park, as well as others. We also really worked with our own staff that deal with administering youth programs, the pool, setting events and reservations, hearing from the feedback, the staff that are on the grounds doing maintenance. Through that, we started to explore options for potential improvements and developed park concepts. We developed recommendations. And we really wanted to understand, you know, after we developed the recommendations, like, did it meet the needs of the community? So then we went out through a community meeting and heard a lot of great input through that. So not to, I guess, overstate the importance of Harvey West Park, but it's the home of our youth summer camps, youth sports, pool. It's provided swim lessons for multiple generations. It's hosted large events, fundraising activities. And really, there's just a lot of, a lot of facilities that foster large gatherings, quinceañeras, wedding receptions, and so on. But, you know, as we look at the park, we notice that a lot of the infrastructure is outdated. And we recognize that some of these are very long-term ideas and projects. So we just want to set in motion, you know, some more exploration about which ideas could work, where should we focus, so that we can kind of continue to look at that and improve it for generations to come. So just to name some of them, the circulation around the park is a little awkward. There's outdated building facilities that, they do host programs, but they weren't really designed to host those programs. We all know about the aging pool and pool facilities and really trying to work right now on these, providing pool service during certain times of year. Restrooms really comes up a lot, very sm- Restrooms really comes up a lot, very small restroom, it's in the middle of the park. You're having a family event at the other end of the park, you know, how are you gonna get there? It's, and so on. I do want to highlight the outdated thematic features. There are some atotum pools and Native American carvings. We did reach out to some of our Native American tribal partners just to get their perspective on that. And I'll just turn it over right now to Patricia.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Hello, thank you, good afternoon. Yes, we developed a mission, a vision statement for the park that encompasses how the community has historically valued the park while also providing a vision for the potential of the future of the park. And so, I'll just read this vision statement. "Beloved by Santa Cruz, Harvey West Park serves as the heart of recreation and community where youth sports play, programs, events, gatherings, and everyday connections thrive alongside its cherished natural landscapes." And with stakeholder feedback and community input, as well as with the assistance of city staff, we developed these park goals, which is to activate the park throughout the day and throughout the year, upgrading building facilities to improve the capacity and the function, to remove outdated or underused facilities or buildings, and then allow for new opportunities for new facilities, introduce new activities and experiences that are complementary to and align with the park, and improve the park organization, create a more optimized set of safety, accessibility, and connectivity, and explore the opportunities to generate revenue because of the increased usability of the park that could benefit its programming. And so, now I'll walk you through Scheme A, which is the Great Lawn Scheme. And I want to emphasize that we really value the natural context in the wooded areas of the park, and our focus was within the developed area of the park. And so, we're really looking at the areas that are already active, the design improvements are in those areas, and again, they'll really leverage the beauty of the natural landscape. And the spine of the park really is this circulation spine where we have pedestrian and vehicular access. On the right-hand side of the illustrative plan, you can see the existing fields. We did various studies on how to improve the layout of these fields and create a layout that allows for multiple uses year-round, as well as, and we'll go into this in more detail, but as well as improving some of the field conditions. And on the other side of the vehicular and pedestrian spine, on the left, we have more of the recreational park areas, picnic zones, and I'll walk through each of these in more detail. But we're really creating a new heart of the park, which you can see here, with a great lawn, respecting the existing trees, with a playground, supporting the adjacency of the park, and activating some of the areas that feel a little unsafe with very popular activities such as pickleball courts and pump track. Here are some character images that help envision what this park could be. So, again, a great lawn space at the heart of the park where events and concerts and picnicking could occur, complementing this park with the pump track, playground, and pickleball courts, and of course, updating facilities that can serve for youth programs and summer camps. Scheme B is quite similar, so I'll only highlight the differences because we know that any scheme needs some of the foundational uses of the park. But what's different here is really that park heart where the playground is more of a central destination feature, and it is linked through pathways to two other medium-sized lawns. And so, they're interconnected through pedestrian circulation, but you'll note the difference between this and that Great Lawn Scheme that was really the central feature. The program remains the same to the north, although the spatial opportunities here are slightly different, slightly larger pickleball courts, and slightly different configuration of the pump track. And again, these are very early conceptual schemes. Moving forward with this would require additional designs and studies in more detail. And here are the images. Again, I wanted to focus on the central playground that could be really a destination, attractive feature for the park, and a lot of the similar uses. And although we don't have one big Great Lawn, we have two significant-sized lawns that could still welcome events and picnicking and community gatherings. So, we'll go through each of the improvements, category by category. The sports fields improvements are some of the top priorities. We are proposing to consider converting to turf fields 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, and again, changing the striping or the layout of these fields to welcome as many of the sports as possible. We received a lot of support from the various sports groups that they recognize that everyone deserves equal use of these fields. We also recognize that Field 1 is very well-loved and doesn't have the same type of maintenance and drainage issues as the other fields, and so that could potentially remain as natural grass. In addition to that, there are facility improvements regarding storage, snack shacks, and equipment storage that would all complement the field use. So, here are some images and looking at the existing fields that have some maintenance issues currently and more efficient potential layouts and turf conversion. On the other side, the forest edge improvements are about trying to bring in more people to the edge of the park. Again, more eyes on the park ensure more safety, and these are complementary uses to those very active sports fields. Pickleball towards the north, an expanded pump track and jump line, and bocce more towards the south. You'll note in the bottom-left corner, the active heart or Scheme B, showing a similar layout but slightly different configuration. Here is a list of the various building and facility improvements that could potentially be part of this new phase of the park, of Harvey West. And again, it's about improving and expanding the existing restroom, addition to, of restroom closer to Field 6. And again, we've heard from feedback that it's really a struggle for young families to reach that single restroom currently, just given the size of the park. More storage facilities and the new pool and gym building potentially, removing the stagecoach house and, excuse me, the train engine perhaps, just relocating it, better situating it, and potentially removing some of the thematic features. Here are some images of what this could all look like. We are exploring an option of including a gym adjacent to the poolhouse, and I'll go into that in more detail, but there's an opportunity to, again, leverage the active nature of the park with more indoor facilities, as well as improving the community center for more programming. The playground improvements, in addition to the central playground that I already mentioned, we are proposing a small totlot in between the sports fields so that younger siblings can recreate while their older ones are playing games or at practices. Sometimes, these are long days for them, and so we want to expand on the play opportunities within the park. And we have a really great system of picnic areas that are kind of trickled throughout the western side of the park, right in between the forested edge and that central spine. And they really work nicely together with smaller lawn areas and secondary pathways. And again, we know that the picnicking and the gatherings are really important for this In terms of the hierarchy of pedestrian circulation, in both schemes, we have a circulation framework that focuses on pedestrian promenade along that central spine. So, that's the thicker purple line that you see there, and it's really kind of the organizing element of the circulation and connects key access points from one end of the park to another. In blue, you see the secondary pathways that connect the various different areas, and in turquoise, we are imagining safe, slightly raised pedestrian mini plazas or kind of crosswalk elements so that as people are getting dropped off and finding parking, these are really zones to get out and enter different park areas very strategically. And in the pink, an ADA accessible walk that is along the perimeter of the forested edge. And so, again, here you can see some images of a promenade that is really welcoming, tied to, you know, gateways coming into the park, a forested, a forest walk that is ADA accessible for all to enjoy, the areas that are closer to nature, and the secondary pathways that really complete the framework of the circulation. As I mentioned, we have this central circulation spine, which is how we'll organize and create more safety around the vehicular circulation. We are proposing two-way traffic so that people have more ease in the entry and exiting of the park, and an improved layout for the parking. So, we're not losing any existing parking, but there's really ways to better organize the parking areas, and again, creating important safety zones for drop-off and crossing. Regarding the community center and pool, we explored a series of schemes that look at different configurations. So, not just pool improvements, but also what could it look like with an additional indoor gym facility? So, in Scheme A, you can see that on the left, we have explored the idea of a gym facility. Of course, this adds to the cost of the park improvements. It doesn't have additional parking necessarily unless the gym is perhaps multi-story and you could consider having parking on the ground level. And Scheme B looks at the gym more on the sports field side, so to the right of the existing poolhouse, and you could introduce new surface parking. And Scheme C doesn't have an indoor gym but provides more surface parking, and Scheme D is a lighter touch where we're preserving more of the green and garden areas, improving the poolhouse and pool and clubhouse, but not adding a new gym or parking facility. Here are some images of these programs kind of fitting together. There is an opportunity to have a gym really be connected to the park, like one side of the gym could be all glass, for example, and really have that exterior-interior relationship with the gym. On the bottom right, you can see a gym that has ground-level parking, and again, these are meant to be explored further, but there are, there are opportunities to fit this within Harvey West Park. Regarding the cultural and thematic improvements, we've heard much love and appreciation for the steam-engine train. Again, we want to be sensitive to some of the thematical and cultural features that maybe now are out of place at Harvey West Park. And so, the community feedback really confirmed that Harvey West Park is well-loved, that folks feel that the existing building facilities are outdated, there is a desire for more or better indoor classrooms and more spaces for activities and improved restrooms. Sports group recognized that if the fields were improved, there could be more year-round use. Of course, everyone has safety concerns, so in the design and in the management of the park, those concerns should be addressed. And then, there's other amenities that could be added like Wi-Fi and internet connectivity related to the sports fields, but also recognizing that there's a lot of potential at Harvey West Park for more program and new experiences. And recently, we also presented to the Parks and Rec Commission the summary of their feedback and questions. After hearing public comment as well, was that the pool improvements and community center improvements should seriously consider a 50-meter pool. There's a lot of opportunity for safety training, firefighter training, but just this is a very water-loving culture here at, here in Santa Cruz, so recognizing that. Again, recognizing the interest in preserving some historic features, but again, being as culturally sensitive as possible. Comment about considering this new gym as a resilience facility, a hub where residents and the community could go to in case of an emergency. So, really layering on the duplicative uses of the facility like this. Looking at encouraging and fostering connectivity improvements, so how people can get to the park with public transit and improved bike and pedestrian arrivals that really connect back to the urban fabric, more safety and security improvements. Look at some cost recovery, cost recovery opportunities, though they might not completely cover the cost of these improvements, at least some cost recovery should be strived for. And again, integrating and protecting the forested area as well as seeking as many sustainability opportunities as possible within the design and the proposed planting for the park. We looked at how we could segment the park to think about flexibility and how it's implemented and in the phasing approach. Needless to say that the sports field improvements could be addressed altogether or field by field, but these different groupings really look at how, depending on the funding available, how the park improvements could be phased over time. I think also something to note is that Area H, which is that circulation spine, once that is underway, it would make sense to make other significant improvements just for ease and added efficiency in terms of the implementation. So, I'll hand it back to Noah for our closing and next steps.
Thank you very much, Mr. Downing.
Appreciate that. Patricia, just in terms of closing, this assessment really helps establish the vision for the park. There's definitely additional planning, design, and permitting that will be necessary to define projects, but it will help us kind of engage with the public as we start to evaluate and move these potential projects forward and weigh decisions. And I'll just conclude with staff's recommendation, that's accept the Harvey West Park Design and Program Assessment. That concludes staff's presentation. We're available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Downing.
Thank you, Mr. Downing. Questions or comments by council members? Councilmember Golda?
All right, well, I thank you for this. I'm really excited to see this design moving forward, and I know that I've talked to Tony about having some cost sharing with some of the organizations, like I think Little League and, who was the other one that offered to help pay for the field? It was the football people. So I think moving forward, if we can keep that momentum going, I would be so excited to see some of the cost share for some of that redevelopment from grass to turf. And I think, as the mayor loves cost recovery, another, a potential income stream would be hosting tournaments, once we have better, better fields and better, better infrastructure. And I know many of us have been on travel teams and the economic impact that that could provide to the city if we were to host a soccer tournament, baseball tournament, softball, et cetera. And so the idea also of a gym space, while it might seem like initial investment, I also could see indoor soccer, volleyball, basketball, roller skating, I have no idea what anyone would do in a gym, but lots of gym activities that could potentially be income generating if we, if we marketed it right. And so I appreciate that, and I had one other final thought, and I did see it in there, but I would be happy to see some other, as somebody that spends a lot of time down there, is additional kiosks-type things per concessions that could also generate income and be an amenity to families that spend long days down there, other than just the one snack shack. I don't have any questions, but just lots of excitement to see this moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. For Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Noah, and everybody for bringing this forward. Harvey West is in my district. I had the opportunity to go to the community meeting where we took a lot of public comments. It was exceptionally developed and run, and I was really, I was really taken with how many different and diverse stakeholders in our community deeply identify with Harvey West. It was really like, it was fascinating to watch. In London Nelson, we had our master swimmers, and they were all moving around together. And we had the pump-track kids, and they were all moving around together. And we had the pickleballers, and they were, they were everywhere. Little League, they were all moving around together, and really wanting to advocate for their interests. And what occurred to me was, we have this, this different, I don't, I mean, maybe competing, maybe not, groups of really strong advocates, but every time I go to Harvey West, there's immigrant families having birthday parties, doing barbecues, using the park, much like De La Vieja, for their home, away from home, where they can host their families. They might be living in smaller apartment units and not have space, as a single-family homeowner might have. That represents equity to me. That represents inclusion to me. And so I'm just fundamentally appreciative of this work. I do think tapping into however we can into those voices more, because I see Harvey West, De La Vieja, and our neighborhood parks serving as truly the, the, you know, fundamentally our source of equity and inclusion in our community. I do have a motion, I'm going to wait until obviously everybody's done here, but I do have some additional comments after folks finish their questions.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor is recognized.
Thank you. Completely agree with all the comments, including Councilmember Golda's ideas for revenue generation. This is really exciting to see this come to fruition. Just one sort of thought question, is there consideration for the playground to do a universally, universally accessible playground like Treasure Cove at Jade Street Park? Is that being considered?
Most definitely.
Okay, great. And then, you know, as I'm sure you know, that was, there was a partnership with County Parks and Friends, they raised over a million dollars because they did a capital campaign, so I'm hoping we will engage in, in this type of partnership with County Parks and Friends and/or community foundations, so that we can raise the funds to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brenner is recognized.
Thank you. I just had a couple of brief questions. I don't know who would like to answer. So if you could speak to the funding aspect of this, would it be similar to our recent San Lorenzo Park redesign, where as funding becomes available, those items could move forward, either through grants or in future opportunities to fund?
I'll just say it's, in all likelihood, it'll be a combination of various sources, but when we, you know, but the potential to go out for a bond, maybe not focus on one particular park, but maybe focus on certain elements for, say, San Lorenzo Park, Harvey West Park, the Wharf, or, or others, and go through a process like that. Also, seems to be some, some groups that are already, you know, discussing the possibility of fundraising, so really tapping into that as well to generate it, and then going out for, for larger grants, and trying to identify that. And then we've tried to group certain areas of the park, so we could focus on maybe some of the smaller ones through focus efforts of grants, and then some of the larger ones through a combination of leveraging resources.
Thank you, Noah, and thank you for that question. Just to add a little bit more context, so the rough order of magnitude, the cost estimate on this entire design is around $140 million. So it's a big price tag. So we recognize that to really accomplish this or to achieve this is going to be piecemeal. And so I think the council has referenced a few options already. We've been in discussion through the engagement process on this plan with groups like Master Swimmers, who are currently creating subcommittee under Friends of Parks and Recreation, and want to raise $10 million to put toward a pool. Our Little Leagues and Travel Leagues, football, et cetera, they are hoping to raise around $14 million to build the turf fields, should the council approve that vision. So a lot of engagement from the community as well, we definitely want to foster that and really enable that through the process. But I think ultimately, to achieve this vision, it will be a piecemeal, kind of step-by-step process with a portfolio of different creative funding streams.
Thank you for that answer, and, you know, and just keeping an equity lens as well. I just want to put that out there, that as we move forward and all of these process with, processes with these public spaces and amenities, that we're, we're paying attention to that, and that's great, that Friends of Parks and Rec is involved in all these organizations. My second question, can you speak to, I received an email, I don't know if anyone else did, from concerned parents about football and playing on the surfaces at Harvey West currently, and is that, can you speak to the surfaces that were described? Does that include adjustments so that the football teams could play safely?
Yes, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so with new turf fields or improvements to the field, safety is first and foremost. So that's a key priority, a key principle as part of this design. But also in the near term, before we make improvements to the fields, we want to make sure that the park is safe and accessible and so forth. So we're working with Pop Warner, as well as our other leagues, to make sure that the fields currently are safe and in touch with the, the family that reached out with those concerns as well.
Okay, thank you. That's great. And then lastly, just making sure that all, any courts, gym, multi-use, and not dedicated as much as possible to one sport, I think that's also inequitable, and just making sure that there are spaces for all the activities, especially on our smooth court surfaces, gym surfaces, for yoga, dancing, roller skate dancing, pickleball, basketball, whatever actions are happening, that we're not just dedicating land to one thing, so.
Yeah, I appreciate that point. We heard through the outreach and engagement efforts too, from a variety of groups, we heard from rugby groups, for example, that don't currently use the park. And so with those turf fields with more year-round access, and more access through, through the day, or each day really throughout the year, you could imagine more groups out there. So whether, again, Travel Leagues with tournaments, or rugby groups, or a whole host of, of different uses, so definitely a key principle here in the design.
Further questions or comments? If anyone in the public who wishes to make comments on this item, this would be your opportunity to do so. While Ms. Greenside is approaching, Ms. Bush, do we have anyone online on this item? We do? Ms. Greenside, welcome.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to start by thanking Noah Downing for his excellent outreach to the community, which is typical of all of the parks that he's been dealing with. Lots of exciting choices ahead and public meetings, so I'm not here to share my preferences on any of the schemes. I also thank the consultants for an excellent presentation. Councilmember O'Hara talked about at the London Nelson Center, where there are a lot of people, and people were advocating for their interests. I was at that meeting, and I had an experience that I think should be taken seriously. I was, we were given stickers, red if you thought this particular activity was a low priority for you, and green if you thought it was your top priority. So I joined in what everybody else was doing. And I had put a red sticker on it, was sort of the pump-track jump line, et cetera, activity. And I was standing back, looking at what else to consider, and a group of males was in front of me, and they were talking, and I could tell from their conversation, they were sort of mountain bike riders, bike, pump-track enthusiasts, et cetera. And they were laughing, and one of them went and put his green sticker over my red sticker. I thought about confronting them, I thought I'd go and tell, which I did, Trey Headenjones, who unfortunately was sick, and by the time I'd described what they'd done and turned around, they had left. I followed up with a letter to the department, saying that I thought this was serious, it compromises data, and I've no idea whether that individual or others put their own stickers over other people. I thought it made the data questionable. So I was surprised when I saw the agenda packet, that that data was, with numbers, was against all the activities. I never received a response from the department about my concerns. So I'm sharing it now, somewhat reluctantly, because this is a feel-good situation, but I think that data is important, and if decisions are based on data, we have to know that that data is valid. So I'll leave it in the good hands of the consultants and the staff to ensure that that never happens again, and that that data that was submitted on that occasion have an asterisk next to it, which suggests that it may not be fully valid. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment on this item? Do we have anyone online? Ms. Bush will take the first person online. Good afternoon, welcome to the council meeting.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeremy Sanford. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a professor at UC Santa Cruz, I'm our head men's and women's rugby coach as well, and also the president of a newly-formed organization called the Monterey Bay Rugby Association. The goal of MBRA is to grow the game of rugby at all levels, in and around our community and all around the Bay, making it very easy for families to, to get involved in this fantastic sport. I think the Harvey West redevelopment plan represents a once-in-a-generation chance to create an inclusive, multi-use athletics facility that supports a broad range of sports, not just the traditional ones that were mentioned in that fantastic presentation, but also fast-growing, internationally prominent sports like rugby. We had over 65 youth kids from the area playing rugby last winter, we had 25 high school students that engaged in the game. We're expecting this year to continue to grow, and we think we're going to become an important part of our, our sports landscape. Additionally, we have lots of students from UC Santa Cruz that continue to stay in the area and want to play, and I think, you know, this development should consider the very simple needs of this fast-growing sport. We're primarily a winter sport, so the turf fields are fantastic. You know, we simply need lines and a place to install goalposts. So I think the plan looks absolutely fantastic, I love the park, I support all your work, and of course, the Monterey Bay Rugby Association is very happy, like Pop Warner or the Little League Organization, to engage in fundraising initiatives, grant writing, et cetera. That's kind of one of my strong suits. So with that, thank you very much, I yield the rest of my time. Go Santa Cruz.
Well, thank you very much. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon. Mark Detle, president of Santa Cruz Pickleball Club. I'm just happy to see the plan.
That's how you're going to describe yourself.
All right. It's very different, yeah, being here right now. Anyway, it's, we're happy with the plan, we have over 530 members, the sport's just blowing up, and having a place to play, it will activate that location. We've seen it at Bromer Park in Live Oak, and if you add lights, it'll activate it even even into the evening. There's only one location right now that has lights for pickleball courts, and those are jammed. We have 70 people playing Tuesdays and Thursday nights up at Sky Park. We'd love to have another little place to, to play. Harvey West Park, it's a, it's a jewel, you're right. I grew up at Harvey West Park, climbed on that train, swam in the pool, played on the fields, and I would love to continue to play at pickleball courts at Harvey West Park. So, thank you.
Mr. Detle, before you leave, thank you for your public service. Decades and decades, great work. Thank you very, very much, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. We have anyone else online? We do not. Do we have anyone else with us that wishes to testify the matter as back before the body, the pleasure of the body? Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a motion with a slight amendment, hopefully that the clerk can bring up to So I would like to move that we accept the Harvey, Harvey West Park Design and Program Assessment, adopt findings for categorical exemption pursuant to Sections 15262, 15306, and 15061 of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. And then what I would like to add is direct the council's ad hoc budget and revenue committee to report back to the full council within six months, with a comprehensive set of revenue options, including bond and revenue measures, to support near- and long-term capital investment in the city's parks and open spaces.
Is there a second? There's a second by Councilmember Golda. Councilmember O'Hara, you may open on your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, want to start with appreciation for the work that's gone into this, and even in my short term on council, I have had the opportunity to see the amazing work that our Parks Department is putting into, visioning San Lorenzo, Harvey West, our neighborhood parks, thinking about our open spaces, of course, the Wharf. I think we're at a point where vision and planning need to be paired with a clear funding pathway. Our park systems have significant unfunded needs, and without identifying dedicated revenue options, we cannot deliver on the community's expectations for Harvey West, or any of our neighborhood community or open space parks. This amendment that I included at the bottom simply directs our budget and revenue ad hoc committee to bring back a menu of options. It obviously doesn't commit to anything today, but it does ensure that we have information necessary to make responsible, long-term decisions. Every major parks initiative, regionally and nationally, is backed by a stable funding strategy. We could try to do this piecemeal, I think it would be better to be very deliberate. So I do think we need some, the same clarity, so that those investments, the investments we prioritize are actually achievable. I don't want these, this plan to stay on a shelf. As a city employee, I had, you know, three feet wide of plans on my bookcase from the pre, my previous, you know, office mate, of plans that never went to fruition. I don't want to see that with this, with San Lorenzo, or with any of the other main, major, long-term plans and visions that we're developing. As we've heard, residents consistently tell us they want safe, clean, accessible, and well-maintained parks. well-maintained parks. And to meet that need, we have to understand what revenue tools are available to us, both short and long-term, and what we could generate. And as we've mentioned, and as I think everybody in this room feels, our parks are critical to youth, families, seniors, climate resilience, and public health. Our parks are about equity and inclusion, and Harvey West is a perfect example of how our local parks serve so many different interests in our community. This motion makes sure that we're doing our due diligence to sustain those assets through a real funding plan. I agree. I think this is a once-in-a-generation opportunity, and I think moving forward with a very conscientious and pragmatic revenue plan will be a legacy for this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments on the motion? Councilmember Golda.
I do have one comment. I appreciate that additional language, but I also would like, and I hope, that the revenue committee explores where else the money could come from within the existing budget. I know, and we all know, that when we had the Shingela outbreak there, we were losing revenue because sports teams weren't playing. But then one way to counter that, like Mr. Dettle said, is put lights there and then we can have people activate it at night. We know that positive programming prevents encampments from starting in the first place. And when we have to do an encampment cleanup that costs a half a million dollars, that's a half a million dollars that we couldn't be spending on capital improvements or other things. And so I just, looking at existing funding that we have as well, in ways to prevent wasting money. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions? Couple of thoughts here. Did I understand, Mr. Downing, correctly, $130 million capital cost? Did I get that right? Say it again?
One forty.
Thank you. One forty. A couple of thoughts on this. One is, we collect 700,000 annually in park fees and another 600,000 in Quimby Development Fees, Quimby Act Development Fees. So that's $1.3 million a year. And we have $140 million capital outlay need over some number of years. I don't think it is at all realistic to think that we can delve into the parks budget and realign things and make even 2% of that, you know, by moving things around. I think you've got to get real about it and understand that there's a very, very heavy lift over a long period of time, if we're only looking at it ourselves. So now the sentence that you should all fear. When I was in the legislature, I authored the two largest park and environmental protection bonds in the state's history, and those were over a two-year period, $5 billion. In 19, in the year 2002, and there has not really been in the last quarter of a century any serious follow-up general obligation bonds by the state. So let's just take a second on that. A GO bond by the state does not raise taxes. It has first claim on the state's general fund. And as a consequence of that, when general obligation bonds are approved and the governor and the Department of Finance are putting the budget together, that's the first thing they allocate, is to make sure the debt retirement on general obligation bonds is met because the state will never, ever default on a GO bond, because they will never, ever sell another one if they did. So the GO bond is the safest possible way to do this, and it does not raise taxes of the state's taxpayers. It has first claim on the general fund. So the idea that when we're looking at something as significant as this, every city, every county, every independent regional park district has exactly the same challenge we have. And so I am supporting this motion, but I do think we should ask our legislative delegation to support two GO bonds for the November 2020, either the November or the June 2026 ballot. One, an affordable housing GO bond measure, which again, does not raise taxes, to be a companion measure to those self-help cities, which have in fact helped themselves and are showing what they can do. Our community has a park and rec fee and a Quimby Act Development Fee, so we are a self-help city. We are not immediately turning to somebody else. But the somebody else is us. It's not somebody else. It's not, you know, Finland or something, we're asking for money. We're talking about what we should do as Californians. And I do think that that should go in our legislative program to have a very significant park and environmental protection bond. It's long overdue. And I think our legislative delegation with Senator Laird, who is the Secretary of the Natural Resources Agency, it's not going to be lost on him what the idea is. Our two assembly members plus the Speaker of the Assembly, who represents eight counties and southern part of the, or eight precincts in the southern part of our county, we're always very proud to brag on him as one of ours, and he's proud to brag on us that he represents part of our county. So I do think that we should make a, we should get into this with the League of Cities and CSAC and so on, really raise this. My last point on this is this. The 125-plus-or-minus bills that have been introduced to tear down barriers to development have not provided one penny in that effort for all of the new construction that's taking place, for anything involving parks and recreation. And that is also a, shall we say, glaring omission on the part of the state's desire to see more housing, which we, obviously, as a community, we have responded favorably. We are a pro designation, a pro-housing designation city. We have our general plan, has the housing element approved by HCD, et cetera. So I think that we are well-positioned with other cities who are doing their part, doing our part on the housing side, and we are falling farther and farther behind on the parks component, part of that, not just in our community, every place in California. So I would hope that what we could do, Madam Councilmember, is that I'm going to support that. I hope you won't find it untoward that as we start to develop our legislative program for next year, that that is one of the things we're going to engage with our legislative delegation early and often, I would hope. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Brenner?
Aye.
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 Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalentari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeler?
Aye.
Question passes into order. We are on item 41, the Murray Street. Let me just check here, real quick. Thank you very much, all you folks. Okay, we are going to do this. We are going to do this. We have been sitting up here for several hours. I know you're waiting for this. We're just going to take five minutes. Five minutes. Council is back in session following our afternoon recess. A quorum is present, as it was prior to our adjournment. We are on file item number 41. This is the Murray Street Bridge Project Temporary Pedestrian Path. We have material in our packet. We have a, we have the Director of the Department of Public Works in front of us, and we have Mr. Crossley, who will also be making presentations. Mr. Nguyen, good afternoon. Before you begin, let me thank you and your staff for everything you do for us every day in so many parts of our city. Thank you so much. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, Nathan Nguyen, Director of Public Works. Today, we have an item here to provide an update on the Murray Street Bridge Seismic retrofit project. We also have some additional information with regards to how we're tracking on the temporary path. That's directed by council. With me, I'll have Kevin Crossley, our city engineer, provide a more in-depth update. But before we get into the presentation, I just wanted to mention that there still is a good amount of demystification with regards to this project. This is a seismic retrofit project. I was just out there earlier this week, or late last Friday, I should say, and members of the public thought we were still building a brand-new bridge and why we aren't continuing to demo and install a new one. And so little things like that, that you'll see later with the included in your packet, is our infographic to help explain that this is a retrofit project. You know, the existing bridge essentially is strengthened and widened for the future use. And so with that, some other good positive news that, you know, we'll get into with Kevin, is that, you know, the project continues to be on budget and on schedule. And so with that, I'll pass it over to our city engineer, Kevin Crossley.
Thank you. Mr. Crossley, good afternoon. Welcome.
Afternoon. Thank you, Kevin Crossley, city engineer. I chose this title slide intentionally to attempt to convey the scale of what we're doing out there. It takes a really dedicated team of city staff, our representatives and the consultant teams, and our contractor working closely together to execute a project like this. That spot where the four individuals are standing turned into a 70-foot-plus-deep hole the day after this fixture was taken. And those purple things on the ride are seven-foot diameter rebar cages that were then connected together and dropped into that hole and then encased in concrete. We're doing multiple of those casings, and it's a very complex project. So I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that's going into getting the actual project built, as well as trying to mitigate some of the ongoing issues with the traffic detours that are creating hardships in the community. Next slide. So before we get to the meat of the nut, we wanted to talk briefly about this project sequencing diagram. It attempts to break down the project into the sort of major chunks that occur over the three years of the project. On the left is the work that we're working to finish this year, this calendar year. It includes all the work that happens underwater, so the pile driving was all finished this year on schedule. We're really happy with that milestone because it then enabled us to start working out of the water. All the things that are listed under items two and three were finished, and we're basically done with item four, which is the extension of the columns. And those will get tied into the new bridge, which is the major thing that's strengthening the bridge from future seismic events. Looking ahead to 2026, the first order of business is going to be getting the county sewer line that runs underneath the floor of the harbor out of the way of the project. That's a major schedule milestone that we need to make, and so that's going to unlock the actual bridge work to resume next in-water work season. That force main project, in its own right, is, it's a huge project. It's over $5 million in value. It's very complex to schedule. And so that's a really complex and tricky part of this project that we're in the planning and execution phases this winter, getting ready for May, when it'll actually go into construction. Then looking ahead to 2027, as you can see, there's a ton of work to do, both on the land sides of the bridge and finishing out the deck widening, which is the main thing that the public is going to appreciate after this project is finished. There's a couple of progress photos. We had folks working in very challenging conditions. A lot of the work was tidily dependent. There was a lot of coordination around the project schedule, week to week, to take advantage of low-tide windows when we'd be placing concrete and riprap and things like that. This is the same information as the phasing diagram but broken down in a schedule. I just want to really emphasize, we've hit a lot of the major milestones that were laid out for 2025. We expect to finish up this first closure early next year and reopen the bridge to one-way traffic. This is the longest closure of the project. The second closure, as you can see, is in 2026, and it's 60 working days, three months, less than half of the time that the bridge has been closed so far. So we're about 10 weeks from reopening the bridge as of today. So we're going to get into the temporary trail that you gave us direction to explore back in August. We've made some progress on that front. We've been working with RTC on design drawings. They gave their executive director authority to execute a right-of-entry agreement at their November 6 meeting, RTC did. In your packet was a letter from Progressive Rail. In that letter, Progressive Rail outlined some of their concerns around safety and liability. Staff share some of those concerns, specifically with respect to ADA compliance on a temporary trail. It's going to be over 3,000 feet in length, as well as lack of lighting, which is a permanent design feature of the Rail Trail 89 project. In addition to the design and right-of-entry agreements, we explored a number of funding alternatives. We applied for RTC block grant funding. We were not successful on that front, as well as looking at different options for reprogramming funding out of sources of revenue we receive, such as gas tax, Measure H, Measure D. All of those sources of funding are over-prescribed because they're being stretched thin due to emergency response on West Cliff, this Murray Street Bridge project, and progressing Rail Trail 89. So that's why we're back today, asking for direction on funding, as well as any other feedback. Finally, I have an update. In addition to exploring the temporary path, we were asked to look at a different traffic control scheme, which we've dubbed the one-lane, two-way traffic, where we would utilize temporary signals to allow for traffic to pass in both directions. There is just basically a set of trade-offs that we'd be making if we implemented this. There's going to be, we've done modeling, traffic modeling, to understand what the impacts of this could be around the bridge in the vicinity, in the neighborhoods. We believe there's going to be queuing, like we would have on some busy days anyways in the Seabright side of things, as well as stacking of vehicles on Seventh Avenue into the Twin Lakes area. We also expect, because of the stacking and delay times to get across the bridge, that people are going to continue to use SoCal, which is the current detour around the bridge. So there's going to be ongoing traffic impacts in the neighborhoods, like the Frederick Street Broadway corridor, that is one of the shortcuts people are using for that detour. And then we're still working with our contractor to understand what the costs and potential risks are. This is inherently more complicated traffic management scheme than having it open eastbound only. So that's something that needs to be priced and agreed to with our contractor. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. Let me start with questions by council members. I'll start on my right. Any questions on this? Council members?
Can I start?
Councilmember Trigaro?
Oh, me.
Councilmember Brenner is recognized.
Thank you. Thank you for that update. Do you have a timeline on that last slide? You just threw up that update.
For the signalized.
Yeah.
That would happen when the bridge is reopened to one-lane traffic, which is tentatively set for the beginning of February.
Great. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you. Let's see, for the temporary bridge, I had a question about the safety and lighting. If you could speak more to that, what is required? In terms, you said the lighting was, would be considered a permanent feature, and so would we, with the temporary, would that lighting need to be?
So the temporary path does not have any provision for lighting. There's no power. That would not be something that we could quickly implement, whereas the Rail Trail 89 design has provision for lighting, which we feel is especially important in the section from the bridge to Seventh Avenue, which is below grade in a very dark and very inaccessible area.
Okay. That's helpful. And in terms of the liability, would lighting be required?
I'm not aware of a specific standard that would require lighting, but it is an important safety feature that we've designed into all of the other rail trail projects.
Okay, let me, I'll pass it on to you. Okay, let me, I'll pass it on to you.
Councilmember Chigara is recognized.
Thank you. I'm interested to hear more. For the funding piece of it, multiple funding options had been explored. For which, what are the, if we were to fund this, what are the traffic calming projects that would be underfunded, and what districts are those in?
I don't have that list.
Thank you, Director Nguyen.
Mr. Nguyen.
Thank you for the question. So as a part of the staff report, we identified several projects that would have to be defunded in order to achieve about a $1.2 million budget to implement or install the temporary path. One of those projects was a neighborhood traffic calming project. Currently, there's around only about $30,000 in that project. There isn't a specific project that has been identified yet for that funding. And so it most likely, given that size of budget, would be some type of crossing improvement that we would try to implement during this budget year, something like lighting and RFB, something of that nature.
Thank you. And another question, if I may. Can you tell me more about, I had seen in the report that the insurance carrier, that we weren't able to locate one that would insure the project? Can you describe a bit more about why that might be the case?
Yes. Thanks for the question. So as a part of the effort to satisfy the concerns both from RTC, Progressive Rail, as well as our own city staff, we evaluated and looked into a special insurance policy for this temporary path. Unfortunately, just given the nature of the level of design, as Kevin mentioned, the lack of lighting, the things of those features, working with our risk management and our pool, insurance pool, we were unable to find an underwriter for this path.
Thank you, Director. That is all of my questions right now. Thank you.
Vice Mayor is recognized.
Thank you. I'd like to better understand the health and safety liability concerns that staff and RTC and Progressive Rail, I don't know if Progressive Rail, but staff and RTC have. If you could explain those, what are the potential liability exposures? What are the costs of those exposures?
I'll do my best to try to explain some of the exposure that we would have. Under our normal, under our normal standard of care, as we're doing currently with the Rail Trail Segment 8 and 9 project, we are doing our efforts there to, when we look at evaluating the seismic structural stability of the bridge, we've already been informed from RTC through their structural report that the bridge is currently seismically deficient. And so as a normal care of practice, we want to make sure we are installing something that is, can withstand a certain level of seismic activity, just like we're doing on the Murray Street Bridge. And so staff is currently doing that analysis with another structural firm for the Rail Trail project. That report itself isn't going to come to fruition until later this spring. And so this is like one effort or one piece where we'd say, our normal standard of care exposes us to where we've received an actual formal document stating its seismic deficiency and us still implementing something even though we received that type of report. So that's one example. Another example is, as Kevin mentioned, about the lighting, where the trail project, Rail Trail Segment 8 and 9, as our normal standard of care, is going to include lighting. The section that he mentioned between the harbor and Seventh Avenue does not have any adjacent lighting, such that you have some ambient light to light the trail, and this temporary path would operate on a 24/7 basis. And so there's concerns from many parties here about putting members of the public in the rail right-of-way without having adequate lighting. So that would be like another example of some exposure.
Okay. And then just one more question, follow-up question. Mr. Crossley put up a slide, I think, that showed the timeline. And so we know that we're going to have bridge opening in February. Can you speak to pedestrian, bike path opening and when that timeline is? I don't know if it's up there, and I just can't see it.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks for the question. So as part of the full bridge closures, the full bridge closure, as it is today, no vehicles, no bikes, nor pedestrians. One opens back up to one-way or one-lane. We anticipate, we've designed it as such, that we expect two-way pedestrian traffic to be reestablished. And as a part of the original design, we were looking at an eastbound-only traffic, where we'd have vehicles and bikes heading eastbound only, just like it was prior to the full bridge closure. But as with previous direction that we received from council, staff is evaluating the one-lane, two-way traffic option now. And so we're still determining, as Kevin has mentioned before, looking at different impacts that will occur with queuing, as well as delay times. And so there's going to be definitely some pros and cons that we want to bring forth and still continue to evaluate. But we are looking at this option and implementing, towards implementing it towards a February opening.
Okay, so that's February, and the pedestrian is?
Also February.
February. Thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Further questions? Councilmember Golders recognized.
I apologize. I just want to be clear. So if we move forward with the temporary pedestrian pathway, we have no insurance?
We would still have the insurance, general insurance that is provided from the city.
But it's?
We wouldn't have a special policy directed specifically towards this path.
I'd provide some further clarification there, Councilmember Golders. So we, the city self-insured up to $1 million. So that means any claim that falls within that, we're paying for out of pocket. Anything beyond that would then hit our pool and our excess carriers. And of course, anytime we have a claim of that size, it certainly has some significant ripple effects in terms of our premiums going forward, because oftentimes, our insurance pool will look at our experience and the size of claims that are coming through, and they'll modify the amounts that we have to pay going forward based on a claim of that size. That's part of what we were hoping to protect and mitigate against, was to find an additional policy that could insulate the potential risk that we would be taking on if we decided to proceed with the path.
Thank you, council member. Further initial questions, comments? This is open to the public. Be opportunity for someone, anyone, to testify on this matter.
My name is Michael Spadelfour. I've spoke to you guys several times on this. I think you guys all received a letter I sent you regarding this project. You guys were working on this project last year. You guys failed to notify anybody about this until your press release in February. We are all small business owners, and we need to save every penny we have during the summer prior to make it through the next year. You guys didn't tell us until February 14th, if we read your press release, that we needed to have money to make it through this summer, right? So then, you guys didn't hold any meetings regarding this. The yacht harbor, the yacht club held a meeting February 28th. The harbor held a meeting on the 11th of March. You guys closed the bridge two weeks later. There's a legal term called foreseeable negligence. You guys are all reasonable people and should have known the damage that was going to happen when you close a road that has 17,000 cars a day travel down it in late October of '22. In the summertime, we have thousands of cars that travel down that. Now the Seabright and all the harbor businesses are now isolated from the city. My numbers being down, traffic at the harbor are down 17% to 20%, which compares to the other restaurants. I know the Crow's Nest had a long conversation with economic development, and I know from press, watching the news, H&amp;H is down. You go to the other side of the harbor, I'm down. Betty Burgers is down. We're all down about the same percent. What you guys did is complete negligence. You guys need to reach into the city coffers. I know we just talked about $145 million for parks, but we are, all have people that have worked for us for years and years. One of the business owners, her lease is up, and she's been doing this for a long time, and she has people that have worked for her for 20 to 25 years. I have people that work for me for a long time also. My River Street store has been under construction since March, the same time this has started. My sales during that complete time, when there was no parking, is up 5%. My other two stores are down 20%. That is all because of your planning. Did economic development, did the city manager, did the mayor, did all you guys get together last year and talk about this? Did you go over the damage and the effect of what you were going to do to all the businesses in the area? No, you didn't. You didn't do any pre-planning. So you guys need to come up with everything you can and throw everything you can at solving this issue that you guys created. We realize and we know the bridge needed to be retrofitted, but you guys should have planned for this, included us, and had us come up with something so we would have known six, eight, nine months, a year ago, because you guys knew you were working on this and did zero to tell us about this. Thank you.
Do we have anyone online? Ms. Bush, we'll take the first person online. Good afternoon and welcome. Three, two.
Hi, this is Brian Peoples with Trail Now. We fully support moving forward with as fast as possible building the trail. You know, it's unfortunate that we're in this predicament. And well, first of all, getting the insurance, you need help with that. Contact us. I have people who basically provide this. This isn't anything new. Thousands of trails are built across America. I understand that city staff, it's uncomfortable to them, so maybe they need to bring in some more expertise. But you should not just say, oh, we can't do it because of insurance, nor does Progressive Rail have any rights. Do not allow them to hold this back, okay? That is not true. And then, at the end of the day, to be honest with the community here, the RTC takes a lot of blame for this, okay? We just saw the story, your presentation on the Coastal Act, and RTC has not applied that to any of their planning. And the idea that they're going to have 60 trains a day through this area and then have a trail that's cadda-levered off of this trestle is, has created this problem. So they have all agreed already that they're moving forward with the interim trail. So the grant money is there. So I encourage the city staff to look at the color of money of the ATP grant and get smart. Get smart. Those rails and ties need to be pulled. They need to be pulled. They're going to be pulled anyway. So you're, actually, your plan to build it next to it, I believe you have some of that, that's not the right approach. Don't try to reinvent the process. Staff, if you don't know how to do it, reach out to, we've been dealing with it for 15 years. We can bring in as many experts as you want, and we can tell you everything about it. So if staff is not capable of coming up with a solution, I suggest that you reach out to the people who have been dealing with this trail for over 15 years. So Mayor Keely, again, I want to thank you for the work that you brought this forward. It's fortunate that you're on the RTC board, as well as the city. And we really need your leadership to drive this business, this solution for the local community. So again, just please, city staff, our city, keep moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Brennan, good afternoon.
Thank you so much. I want to, first of all, start by saying how much I appreciate every single one of you giving unanimous support for trying to find a solution. We can talk about the past, that's the past. Let's talk about today. Let's talk about tomorrow. So what I'm hearing from the staff and the report that was presented to you was that there are some devil, the devil is always in the details. So there are some problems that have to be solved. The one that I heard significantly mentioned today, which also apparently impacts the insurance question, is lighting. Now, all of us here have been to events where there is mobile lighting. It doesn't have to be permanent. There is a way to get lighting on that area for the nighttime hours. What is the cost of that? Have staff looked into what mobile lighting would cost for the period that things are closed? And so I think, as a very simple question, find out the answer to that. Now, that impacts insurance. We heard from the city manager that we do self-insure for up to $2 million. And we want to always be careful about insurance, but it's possible that one of the reasons the underwriters aren't giving us a quotation on a policy is because of the lighting issue. So let's take these things one time, one step at a time. RTC, Fred Keely, has been instrumental in making things happen there. They have signed off on us moving forward. They haven't said, no, you can't do it because there's no lighting. No, you can't do it. They haven't said that. So there's a way to do this. So you're hearing from the business and the community, even this earlier today, when I was here bringing the Italians. There was public comment, starting at 11:45, talking about this issue. It's, and you guys have all been super supportive. In terms of finding money, two areas that I saw recently mentioned in the media was that there's a street design project that's already been apparently funded, but it hasn't been allocated to where it's going to go. That's one possibility. There's a pot of money for city hall renovations. Those are great, but we've got a crisis. We've got an emergency. Those things can be postponed. You guys know the answer to where the money is. I only have some ideas, but you have the answer. Please come up with it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else online, Ms. Bush? Not with their hand up, anyway. Anyone else wish to testify on this matter?
Hi, my name is Lori Negro, and I own Betty Burger. I know this nut. Lori had to leave.
You want to testify on behalf of yourself? Go ahead and do it.
Okay, great. Lori is sorry she couldn't be here. Good afternoon, city council and staff. The small merchant community in Lower Seabright is under assault. The decision by the city council and the city management to proactively ignore our existence when organizing work on the Murray Street Bridge project was disrespectful, and it has damaged all of us in Seabright and the harbor. By the way, the mayoral proclamation that earlier today, declaring November 29th one day as being crucial to the health of small businesses, is very ironic. It highlights the devastation that is happening in Seabright, where our main artery is going to be closed for 1,000 days, not one day. We need people to come to Seabright. Yard signs, free two-hour parking loans are not enough. So how can this city manufactured disaster be fixed? It can be done. Temporarily, open the rail bridge for pedestrians and cyclists from now until the retrofit is completed in 2028. Enabling 450 people across the bridge every day going forward will make a massive difference to both the Seabright and the harbor businesses, although significantly less than 17,000 cars. It is important to remember, people do not drive to Days Market to buy a tuna sandwich. Customers drive by Days Market, and they stop there. This is an important point, and it pertains to 15 of the 17 businesses in Lower Seabright. It pertains to Java Junction on both sides of the harbor. To solve this, as the city staff reach out to Gail Pellerin or Jimmy Panetta's offices specifically for these things, when we spoke with them last week, they said they had had very little contact. And as you know, they cannot contact you. The city staff has to proactively contact them. Also, why not use rail trail funds to establish at least maybe some part of the lighting component? And there are already insurance policies in place for all the other rail trail segments. So why not this one? Although not specifically on agenda, because unlike in the natural world, the glacial pace of the city action has not increased, allow two-way traffic, as discussed before, renegotiate the bridge contract to allow either early or, to allow earlier completion.
I'll wish to testify on this matter. Good afternoon. Welcome to the council meeting.
Hello. Thank you for having us. Trudy Rantzen from Sub Shack. I wanted to just, thank you for really bringing this up and really trying to work on something for getting people to come to businesses. for getting people to come to businesses at the harbor. I lost $20,000 this year, and I'm struggling to think how I'm going to pay my rent and things like that. In June, when the road was going one way, I had a great June. July, as soon as the road was closed, my sales went from $25,000 from that month to $10,000. So it was 25 last year, $11,000 this year. So I'm just a little bit concerned about, you know, you're gonna be closing the bridge again, June and August next year. So how are you gonna really help other people get down? And this is what I'd also like you to think about of how to get people there, because I know sometimes I had people coming down, they'd drive down Seabright, and they'd go, oh, it's closed. And then they'll just go. So that's really just my thought of how, just don't forget us, you know? Come paddle boarding, come Christmas shopping, come do things to support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you want to line up to speak, what you want to do is go over here. Thank you. Good afternoon, sir, and welcome.
Afternoon, everybody. I'm Holland Tappam with H&amp;H Fresh Fish. I'm right there in the heart of it, and it's definitely impacted us greatly. It's anybody that would appreciate all of you guys maybe to do a little bike ride down there, have a look, go by some of the businesses like Deeks or the little pet store that's down there, or the tobacco shop that's down there. Some of the bars are all hot. A lot of people aren't showing up and making a deal out of this. They're shy and don't really know what's up. But there's a lot of business down there that's severely impacted. There's really nobody down there. It's like especially on the other side, it's a ghost town, you know? And it's, it needs to be looked at. I think, that being said, not only, not even really as a complaint, I mean, this was thought of 15 years ago, and Santa Cruz is in the same world it was 15 years ago for this retrofit. It is our major artery. The entire town is complaining. I'm sure it impacts a lot of you. It puts 15 to 20 minutes on my commute every day that I'm never gonna get back in my life for three years. I mean, it's super frustrating. I think in saying that, I think a little bit of marketing and stuff like that always helps. A lot of people are getting aware of it, like Johnny's new, they're doing a Tuesday taco night. Everybody's doing their best to try to, we're doing specials to have people come down, but it's a big journey to go from east to west. And in saying that, I think the biggest thing is being pragmatic in, in looking forward to that is, there can't be these little delays like we've had on other projects that are in Santa Cruz, like not having light so we can't cross over the new bridge and stuff like that. There can't be those things. This thing has to be completed as fast as possible. I would, I would be up for any way that we can raise money to add to these contractors. I know we have the lowest bid possible, and a lot of what's on the lowest bid is that they don't work as long and as hard possibly. I would like to see seven days a week. I would like to see a bonus possibly, these millions that are being spent even on, on the rail trail, just be given to the contractor to get this thing done faster. I mean, they're down there at normal hours, which I understand, but we need everything we can, and we definitely don't need any little stalls or anything that's gonna happen to hold this back. It is devastating for us, you know? And I, I, anything that we can do to mitigate, make sure that stuff goes faster and on time and right. It's like get that thing open. I'm also more in favor of doing traffic lights going both ways. I think that'll help all of us, really, even like if it's stalled out, we'd rather have a little bit of patience going both ways than just being stuck in one direction, you know? Like she was saying that her, her stuff is up 20% during that time. It would definitely help all of us having that and keep us open as much as we can and on that bridge and as far as driving over it, in both ways, it's definitely where I would suggest, the longest and best as possible. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Do we have anyone else online, Ms. Bush? Next person in line, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Liz Inkfer. I am owner of Inkfer Pizza Works on Seabright, and I've been in business for 25 years. I am personally responsible for my rent, not the business. So, and that will be for the duration of the bridge project, just to inform what I get to deal with. And currently, basically, I'm essentially a-
Will you just pull that microphone? There we go. Now we can hear you better. Thank you.
Currently, I'm essentially a volunteer. I'm taking my social security and I'm taking some of my retirement funds. The publicity around this project has helped. It has brought a trickle of locals in that I've noticed. But again, most of our income is made during the summer months and where this hard closure has affected us, and it will be another hard closure next year. So it may disappear another of our seasons. Please do everything within your powers to help the Seabright and harbor businesses and to ease, ease travel for Santa Cruz residents, because I know the folks on the 17th side are gridlocked in traffic and for the Santa Cruz residents also, as soon as possible, because it does take time for people to change their travel habits and get back, back to Seabright and to our businesses. Thanks for all that you do. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Good afternoon, sir. Welcome to the council meeting.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for your service. I was a public servant for a number of years at Calpers, so I'm quite familiar with the Brown Act and public speaking, and I'll try to keep this quick. So my core purpose here, my name is Wiley Tollitt. I live in the neighborhood, and I've been, I'm one of those people that's been trickling in, doing my best to support the local businesses. And I can just attest how dramatic the impact has been on the traffic on Seabright and SoCal, and how dramatic the drop-off has been down in that neighborhood. I moved to the neighborhood because I, there's just a, it's a very cool historic vibe there. There's been businesses there since the late 1800s, and it's just a really neat area. It's close to the water. That's why people are attracted to it. But right now, you can't really get out of there. You're kind of stuck. And so I'd really appreciate the city doing what it could to find the funding. The problems that I heard in terms of getting that trail working, they're certainly problems, but they sound relatively small in the grand scheme of civic planning. It strikes me that most of those are basically solvable. And last but not least, I'll just propose something. I drove over the Golden Gate Bridge the other day, and they do a thing where it's southbound all lanes in the morning and then, or almost all lanes, and then northbound all lanes, almost all lanes in the evening. And it'd be interesting to see if city staff could consider sort of doing something similar where it was westbound in the morning and then eastbound in the evening when most of the commuters are using it. Because it's just interesting. The other thing I've watched, because it's very close to my house, is the impact on SoCal in the evening. It's basically gridlocked, and I'm sure everybody's seen that. So just that small incremental change, losing Murray Street, has just dramatically impacted everything. And so those businesses, I'm sure, impacted as well, because no one wants to be there. They're just trying to use it as a commute zone. So anyway, last but not least, please do what you can. I know that this is not easy. You've got to take rob Peter to pay Paul here, but it does strike me that this is an area you want to preserve. It's an important area of town, and it's historic, and I would hate to see it just be permanently damaged by this change. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Good afternoon, welcome.
Hi, my name is Charles Meyer from the Crow's Nest Restaurant down in the harbor. I just-
Pull that a little closer to you. You closer to it. There we go.
Yeah, no problem. I didn't, I didn't really plan on talking, but it's better to just check in and let you guys know that it's still, you know, it's probably getting, is getting worse, not probably getting worse, and we're having to do things we've never had to do. I mean, I've been there since the 80s, and we're, we're having to cut people. I mean, I think I looked at this stuff this morning. I think, you know, we, people come to work at 5:30 and start doing maybe even earlier, start setting, I mean, our first customer at like 11:00 or, you know, so we're opening. So I mean, it continually just keeps getting worse and worse, and I have hundreds of employees, which means I have, everybody has in a family, so I have probably thousands of people that rely on the business, not me personally, but the business. So in general, if you, you know, whatever you guys can do to make things go faster, which doesn't seem like there's actually much you can do, but I appreciate that. And the, and I also wanted to say that the, it's great to get a walking bridge, but realistically, we need cars. Cars are what's gonna help us. I mean, it's great to get people across the bridge. It's great to be able to walk across and not to cut off, you know, one side or the other. But realistically, for the businesses on the other side of the harbor and for Seabright, we need people and cars to come over. But, yeah, so it continually keeps getting worse. And I also wanted to say, which I, is that I know that you guys have a program for, for the reduction of business, but I just would want you to take into account that we have had to raise prices in the time period of when you're asking us to have a look back, which changes, you know, I think that most people have had to raise prices twice probably in the time period you're asking for a look back. And, you know, minimum wage goes up every, you know, it's like, so there's, there's a lot of other things, so thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Farrell.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. I'm speaking today both as a Seabright resident and also as the chair of Friends of the Rail and Trail. We want to thank the project team. Well, first of all, I want to express my deep appreciation for the difficulty that businesses are going through in our neighborhood. I worked for the city of Santa Cruz during the Loma Prieta earthquake and had to deal with all the displaced businesses downtown as part of that work. So this kind of crisis is not something new to me. And I just want to say that I really appreciate the work that city staff has done to try and help those businesses. And secondly, I want to say that I really appreciate the work to move forward, the opening of the bridge to traffic in February next year, and anything that can be done to accelerate that, I think, is the critical component to helping the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I do also have someone online.
As soon as we finish this gentleman, we'll go on. Good afternoon.
My name is Six Penya. I want to say that first I can go on about what I consider to be negligence in the planning process, but I'm not gonna bother with that. But I invite you all to come down and sit in the vacant space where the Seabright Social was and the Seabright Brewery was, sit in that vacant space on a Friday afternoon that used, used to be bustling, and just sit there for a while and just watch nothing, because that's what it is right now. There's nothing, there's hardly a car passing by on a Friday afternoon. It is, if you're not familiar with it, it's pretty, it's devastating, as everybody else has already conveyed. I also wonder, when you talk about the insurance issue, what is the insurance issue if somebody gets hurt on the already existing trail? I don't know. Nobody's mentioned that there's already an existing trail that many people use every day, joggers and bikers and whatnot, and it's not, it's full of rocks and it's full of obstacles, and it's certainly not ADA compliant. It's already there. The likelihood of somebody being hurt on that is far greater than if we were to put a DG path, you know, gravel path or whatever. I think also that with community support, we could probably rally a volunteer team that would probably get this thing done with minimal budget, maybe a little bit of funds for some DG, which of course is that yellow gravel stuff, ADA compliant railings over the bridge, string lighting from Harbor Freight, you know? I mean, I don't think it's that big of a deal. I think we're making a bigger deal of it than it is compared to the issue itself. I'd be happy to help with that effort. That's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here. Anyone else? We have someone online, last person online. Good afternoon, welcome.
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Regarding this Murray Street Bridge, I just, yeah, put my little comments here. You know, I have my nephew here a couple, about a month ago or so, and we took a bike ride, wanted to go down to Santa Cruz. I live over here in Capitola. My name's Bob Ichman. Yeah, we took the ride. I followed the route that's set up right now, the Arena Gulf Trail. We went up there, and I came off the trail on the other street over there, and I had this trouble on my GPS, trying to figure out my way. I got lost and stuff. On our way home, you know, we went all the way up to Natural Bridges on our e-bikes and coming back home. On our way home, I said, you know, we're gonna stop here in Seabright. We stopped at Seabright Gilly, wonderful sandwiches, by the way. I did, you know, we're gonna go across this, let's go across this rail bridge. I know it's not officially open, let's just do it. What a big difference that was. You know, I'm older and I have had, I had to hit surgery, so I walked my bike across and he went off the road ahead, but my God, what a world of difference it was riding across the bridge versus having to go up to the Arena Gulf Trail. So much shorter, so much easier. My God, believe me, please, do you want 20 years to go help you struggle to gravel out of the trucks, whatever? I'm more than willing to help. I'm more than willing to do whatever I can. Like I said, I live here in Capitola, but that was so much easier and more straightforward than having to do this roundabout across the trail. I, you know, it's just amazed me. I really hope you guys can do something here, and I thank you for your time. I'm grateful.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, Ms. Bush, online? Anybody else with us wish to testify before the body on this measure? Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon. So the Seabright neighborhood has been a group of concerned citizens for over 100 years. I mean, there are buildings there that used to house post offices. Some of the owners of the businesses here are in those 100-year-old buildings. And we have a neighborhood association. I'm on the board. I send a newsletter. Some of you get it. And I just want to say, it's just been an important community for a very long time. And we are, we're severed. I mean, the harbor joined us 150 years ago, but we've been severed by this bridge. And communities and neighborhoods like this are fragile. You all work in your deliberations at times to find mending, money to help support the creation of neighborhood cohesiveness, like around the Rio Theater and other places. But we've had it, but it's fragile and it's tenuous, and our businesses are in trouble. And we just so much encourage you to do whatever you can to help support this fragile network of neighbors and businesses who come together. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. Anyone else? Matters back before the body. Pleasure with the body. Council member Brennan.
I have a motion, but I, I do want to ask just a quick question based on a comment, and perhaps Director Nguyen, you could answer. There was a question about what happens if someone gets hurt now on the rail pedestrian bridge? The trail's already there.
Currently today, the rail line is not owned or operated by the city of Santa Cruz. The regional transportation owns that part of the right-of-way. And so today, as, as members of the public cross along the rail line, that is really the responsibility of RTC and not the city of Santa Cruz.
And yes, city attorney?
I could just add to that a little bit. By the city constructing a temporary pathway on the rail corridor, the city will be assuming any liability associated with a dangerous condition, accident or injury that occurs on the, on the rail line. If I could just compare that to the rail trail. The rail trail is built based on objective engineering standards and criteria that include width, shoulders, fencing, lighting, and in order to put this project together in an expedited basis, in a cost-effective way, the path across the railroad trestle would not comply with all of those standards. The concern is that when you have a design that's been engineered according to objective standards, then the city has the ability to assert design immunity for an injury that occurs, assuming that the path- that occurs, assuming that the path is constructed in accordance with those objective design standards. We can't assert that immunity for this proposed project because it doesn't meet our standards. And with regard to the insurability, that's, that's the same concern that basically renders us unable to find a policy of uh project-based insurance coverage to, to meet uh those requirements. The city is self-insured for up to a million dollars. Above that, we have several layers of umbrella insurance. In a catastrophic inju- uh, in a catastrophic injury where the city is held liable for over a million dollars, some multiple thereof, um, the risk pool would cover that loss. But that doesn't mean that it would have no impact on the city above the million dollars that you have exposure to, because um the city's experience in paying out claims of liability that tip, that dip into our umbrella coverage immediately causes uh the, the rates for insurance coverage to increase, to basically recompensate the risk pool for that liability. So um, so it's, from a legal perspective, it's, it's a very concerning situation.
No. Councilmember Brenner, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just, I have a motion that I'd like to bring forward and I did just send it to our city clerk. If you could pull that up. Yes. Um, I'll just state, well, I'll let the motion. So I moved to accept the information and further moved to not move forward with a temporary pedestrian path across the Harbor Rail Bridge.
There is a motion.
I will second.
Motion, I'll second. You may open on your motion.
At the August uh council meeting, the end of August, I believe, um, this city council directed a dozen or so multifaceted um options and resources, um, direction uh based on requests and input from our uh small businesses and the business community in the lower Seabright and Harbor area in order to address the challenges that um, and they had, and the impacts that they have expressed. And some of those support options um have been completed, some are in progress. This temporary pedestrian path on the rail bridge adjacent to the Murray Street Bridge was one of those support options. And I appreciate the businesses showing up and speaking, it's important to hear from you, it's important to work together. And I'm so glad that this council gave the green light as well as RTC um to pursue this option. And uh, you know, thank you to all the city staff and partners and um the expedited due diligence to work towards making this happen. I, you know, sitting here, reading through the, the details, listening to everyone's input and some input that we received outside of this meeting, but really based on the blaring health and safety concerns, this clearly is not an option in the best interest of the community at large. With the seismically deficient and unsafe conditions and no um career risk that we would then shoulder that liability would transfer from RTC to the city. And that's something that um I don't think should uh be even a discussion. I think what I do want to highlight is this is not the only support directive. We hear you, we prioritize you, we will continue to invest money, time and resources in direct business support and other directives that you have shared and asked for from us that we are doing and continue. And if something's not working, let's continue to work towards um more uh resource or whatever it is that we can continue carrying through. We recognize your businesses are lifelines for families, that was stated, for employees, for jobs, for you. And um, we, you know, really hope that you will all and everyone in our community will continue with next steps, you know, staying up to date. Um, I know many of you have had one-on-one meetings with city staff. I know many of the directives that from August ha- are still in progress, so still continuing, this is not the end-all, be-all. So that's, that's my motion.
For the comments, Councilmember Trigaro.
Thank you. Um, I recognize um as a longtime uh resident of District Two and now living in District One, I go down to District Two for all my services. And the hardships experienced by these businesses are palpable. I've heard to date just serious, serious concerns about insurance, engineering concerns, lack of ADA, a lot of the things that make this project simply a non-starter for me. At the same time, I've heard from businesses say very clearly that the two-way traffic they believe will contribute to their businesses more. And on its face, I have to agree, I'd rather have cars um doing the two-way come spring, come twenty twenty-six with the direction um that we had given to explore rather than lighting up a, a dangerous pathway at night when many businesses are closed. I want to express my thanks to Councilmember Bruner. Um, you know, months ago, she put forward basically a portfolio which included this as an option for staff to explore and bring together. And although this one is not feasible in my mind, um, the rest of her direction that we all supported at that point um does have really great solutions and projects in them that staff and businesses are working on. And I want to say that even though I know folks may be disappointed to hear me say that I'm not supporting this today, I do want to reaffirm that all the other actions and my support um will continue. You'll see me down in Seabright on Friday night. Okay, thank you.
Questions, comments, further questions, further comments? Councilmember Gold.
I appreciate you guys, um, your comments. I'm, I'm like the businesses, I, I underst- I hear you and I, I um, I want to say that we, I do want to continue to work towards finding ways. I did have one question, somebody brought up the idea of the bonus for the contractor. Is that something that we could do if they did finish early to incentivize the project finishing?
Uh, thank you for the question, Councilmember Gold. Um, as part of the uh efforts to accelerate the project, um, the, the project sequencing has to be done in a certain order and has to be done seasonally. The next part of the, the critical part of this implementation is relocating the county sewer main in the low-flow season, which is going to happen uh mid-two thousand twenty-six. And so once that work is complete, uh, we're open to going back to the contractor and seeing if there's a way to condense the schedule in two thousand twenty-seven and hopefully bring it in before the January twenty-eighth date, right now that we have, uh, two thousand twenty-eight date. But until that critical work happens in this certain sequence, we can't really accelerate the project because these things have to happen in a specific order.
For the questions, Councilmember Brenner.
I just, thank you for bringing that up and I think it's really important that um I don't see, um, so communications out not only to the businesses, there's the, the email list um and um opportunities to receive input, but also out to the public, um, I think are really important in terms of all these um in-progress actions and um next steps so that everyone, that messaging is super important to that um we continue with that uh communication.
Thank you. Councilmember O'Hara.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to reiterate my support for direct relief. Um, I think this is a direction that we gave last August. Um, I think I heard from our deputy city manager that the loan program has been publicized and we only have one business that has exercised any interest in that. I want to understand why, um, what are the cons- I, I'm not, I'm asking this of, of our city staff and I hope um the community members that are out here that maybe have answers. Um, I would encourage you to engage with city staff and vice versa. I think that's uh the observations that we've heard about um increased uh increased prices, um, you know, not direct correlation year by year because of inflation, because of changes in wages, et cetera. We need to figure all of this out and I, you know, I am very much in favor of a direct re- relief package. I think that's something that um should be data-driven and it should be um very specifically tailored to each business. So I think we are in the process of continuing to move that forward. I want to bring that to the attention of those that are in the, at the room today. If there are flaws, let's engage on that, um, because I think that's something that I think we need to be really focused on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nguyen, Mr. Kandadi, a couple of questions. Um, one is, there's a letter from Progressive Rail to the RTC dated October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. As I read this, uh, the request of the RTC to accommodate the request of the city of Santa Cruz to use this has been denied by Progressive Rail. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
Absent their approval, do we have any standing to be able to do anything about that? In other words, is it a matter of law that they need to provide their approval on this?
The question really, uh, as I would characterize it, is do they have the legal ability to stop the city from moving forward with the project?
Yes.
Progressive Rail owns an easement of access to the corridor. If the city were to move forward sort of in defiance of Progressive Rail's um more or less rejection of the proposal, um, they would likely seek a, a court injunction to prohibit the city from trespassing on their easement and um, I can't predict with certainty the outcome of that, but they do have a property right in the nature of an easement.
My experience at the RTC with Progressive Rail is that they're horrible. They have no interest in this community that they've ever demonstrated beyond wanting to try to mine some money out of here, which they can't do. They are in a situation where there's twenty-seven bridges and other crossings that need to be replaced, repaired or upgraded before Progressive Rail can do anything beyond their South County work and allowing roaring camp to access uh the boardwalk. Them withholding uh their approval of this is, in my estimation, nothing short of simply mean-spiritedness. Uh, I think if we had a rail operator that was based in California, anywhere in California, they may have more sympathy. These people are based in Minnesota, they have no interest in this. They made a very bad business decision, that's their decision to decide to be the rail operator. It's a terrible decision and now they are denying whether it is this or other actions the RTC is trying to take in order to move forward on the three promises made to voters in Measure D, the good Measure D. You were going to get a freeway widening, you were going to get more access on there for the metro, you were going to get a trail, you were going to get rail. The freeway people got their freeway, the trail is limping along and the rail is nowhere. And a lot of this has to do with Progressive being completely uninterested in being a community partner. I don't know that we have a choice beyond what the one is that is contained in the gentle lady's motion, but I will tell you that over at the RTC, I expect myself and others, Progressive's going to have all hell to pay for this. Clerk will call the call.
Councilmembers Trigaro? Aye. Bruner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalantari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye. Motion carries, so ordered. Item forty-two. We're on item forty-two, an amendment to the municipal code pertaining to medians.
Mayor, I think that might be me.
Say again.
I think I might be leading the discussion on this. Thank you. I'm going to make this pretty brief. Uh, last May, during our budget hearings, the tail end, I think it was the last thing that we discussed during the second day of our CIP discussion, we were on the topic of um safety concerns around our medians, um, in particular, safety concerns around pedestrian impacts associated with our medians across town. Um, in that discussion, I raised some historical context because when I was in the city manager's office as a city staff member, I was um aware that we, that city council passed an ordinance of very wide sweeping prohibitions of lingering on medians and our roundabouts in, in our citywide. Um, and so I raised that to this council. Um, I think there was probably, most folks didn't know we had this median uh ordinance on the books. We heard from the city attorney that day that we are not enforcing that Muni code for concerns around First Amendment and free speech rights. Um, and so we had a conversation fairly informally about returning to the question of our Muni code associated with medians and making sure that we are um narrowing our approach uh to ensure that we are um upholding our values about ensuring that um safety, safety are, um, is um considered paramount for pedestrians. Um, but then also that we are um layering on, on top of that, um, a very um, you know, consistent focus on the constitutional rights that our citizens have to be in our public spaces. So um, I don't know how I volunteered to be a part of this, I think it's because of my background um as an engineer. Um, I met with Mayor Keeley and the city attorney's office and from my perspective, wanting to always focus on a data-driven um process, I had several questions around the way I thought about focusing um our approach was to think about risk, risk for pedestrians um in our medians and making sure that we were focused on um, again, data-driven, evidence-based practices around risk. Um, and I, uh, if the clerk could bring up my PowerPoint slide I sent you. During that first conversation, we speculated um about are, is there criteria associated with pedestrian, pedestrian risk that we can apply to narrow our Muni code through this ordinance to ensure that we are limiting the risk to pedestrians on medians um with this objective criteria? So I'm going to just share this briefly. Generally speaking, there's about three or four considerations, um, if you look up um, you know, data-driven approaches to this. At speeds greater than and equal to thirty-five miles per hour, there's an exponential increase in pedestrian fatality. I think you get to about fifty percent and that's per the AAA Foundation for Traffic Safety in two thousand and eleven. For medians of a width less than six feet, it's incompatible with a Refuge Island Safety Standards, that's from the Federal Highway Administration and the National Association of City Transportation Officials. Traffic volumes are greater than or equal to fifteen thousand, average daily traffic is considered um a, a high risk for crash exposure, according to the North Carolina Department of Transportation Research. And then ultimately, within two hundred feet- And then ultimately, within 200 feet of arterial or complex intersections, you also have a higher risk. I think in talking to Director Nguyen, I think the data that you provided in that conversation we had was something like some vast majority of traffic accidents happen within 20 feet, 200 feet of intersections. With that all in mind, from a very personal perspective, I don't let my three daughters travel across town, Highway 19 intersection at night, for fear that they're going to run somebody over. I mean, this happens a lot in our community. And yes, it happens because people are crossing at night, but we should be considering how to limit that exposure for pedestrians on unsafe medians. And so this particular ordinance that you see in front of you today is an attempt to narrow our focus to speeds greater than or equal to 35 miles per hour. We took a more conservative approach and have the width less than four feet or less. We are studying the traffic volumes, and if we, you know, come back with, say, our corridors, let's take into consideration Ocean Street when everybody's leaving the boardwalk on a summer evening, if that is also a consideration, we will come back to council with that as well. And then we also took a more conservative approach of intersections that are within 100 feet of these complex intersections, so intersections that have speed greater than or equal to 35 miles per hour, which is really only two in our community, that's Highway 19 and Highway 1/Mission Chestnut. So thank you. That is my presentation.
Councilmembers have questions? Members of the public have comments? Matters back before the body.
I'll move staff's recommend, or our recommendation. Thank you.
There's a recommend, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Councilmember Trigaro. You may open on your motion.
Thank you. I think I will pass on any additional comments, and I appreciate everybody's consideration today.
Councilmember Trigaro.
I want to express my appreciation to both the mayor, Councilmember O'Hara, and staff. Councilmember, it's clear that you did a lot of research in a short amount of time, and all of that being centered on safety, safety of all folks, right, which was the case that you just described there, safety of pedestrians, safety of vehicular. I really appreciate your thoughtfulness here. I've seen it in the past from you, that engineering brain, whether it was the noise ordinance. This one, very clearly, you've let the data, and I appreciate that you went on the conservative side of all these numbers as well for our community. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
A question, Mr. Nguyen. With the adoption of these ordinances, when will the first couple of intersections be dealt with pursuant to our request over the years and the budgetary actions we took earlier this year?
Yeah, as a follow-up piece to this ordinance update, my staff is developing some options to present, to bring back to council in January, outlining some of the pros and cons between some of the different design options. In addition to that, we'll be seeking some additional direction with regards to which funding we should use towards said improvements.
My understanding earlier this year and in previous years when we've discussed this is that we are going to attempt to address this situation in at least two intersections in the current fiscal year that we're in. Is that correct?
I think what we'll provide, multiple options with regards to different design, again, pros and cons of them.
That's not my question.
I think that the, the design options will include costs to them, and so I think as a part of our effort to bring forward these options, we can look at whether it can extend beyond one, two, or three intersections. I think we'd be open to that discussion, but when we talk about the costs of these different options, we want to bring forth to the council to help us, guide us in which direction you'd like to seek.
I understand that. I want to make sure that our previous direction is not being vegged up, and that is that we're going to get these under construction in the fiscal year that we're in right now. Is that correct?
I'll chime in here real quick, Mayor.
Please.
Short answer is yes, based on council's direction in January.
Clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Trigaro?
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalantari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye.
Motion passes and so ordered. We're on item 43. This is an amendment to the municipal code pertaining to sidewalk vending. Who will be presenting on this? Ms. Bronson, good afternoon and welcome.
Good afternoon. Thank you. Well, at the end of a long day, I just have a very simple, straightforward item for you today.
Good idea.
Yeah, we'll keep it quick. I would just consider this a simple cleanup item for you. The city attorney's office is proposing minor amendments to Chapter 5.82 as set forward in the agenda report and the draft ordinance. The idea at a high level behind these amendments is to delete a couple of uncommonly used grounds for impounding vendor goods, and to also clarify that the city can bring a civil action to enjoin repeat violations of the municipal code relating to our sidewalk vending ordinance. And with that, I would urge you to just accept our city attorney's office recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments by members? Anybody with us in the public? Questions, comments? Matters back before the body? Pleasure with the body. Councilmember O'Hara moves. Councilmember Trigaro seconds, adoption of the ordinance and related actions. Clerk will call the roll.
Aye.
Brunner?
Aye.
Newsom?
Aye.
Holder?
Aye.
O'Hara?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Kalantari Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Keeley?
Aye.
Motion carries and so ordered. Ms. Bush, for the business, come before the body. Mr. Kandadi, for the business. Motion to adjourn would be in order. Councilmember Holder moves. Councilmember Brunner seconds. They both do it reluctantly. They would like to stay here for hours more. Those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Stand adjourned. Good work, team. There we go.